Welcome, everyone. It is November 4th, and I think before we start our meeting, we should all take a deep breath. We've all been through a lot, and we continue to be in it. But tonight, we have some very important things to cover in our local community. So we'll just take that moment and get present right here in Fairfax and start our meeting. So before we begin, I would like to just give a brief explanation. I've tried to make this as brief as possible about how to participate this evening. We are all participating virtually. So the go-to place is our town website, and that is www.townoffairfax.org. And on the website, you will see what you are seeing right now on the screen, which is ways to participate. You can watch on Cable Channel 27. That's the Community Media Center of Marin website. And that will take you right to the live channel, the government channel. You can also watch on Comcast, Channel 27, which I just mentioned, or AT&amp;T Channel 99. If you are listening by phone and you would like to speak, you will press *67 before dialing to hide your number. And when you're prompted... Michelle, this is a lot of information. I'm just going to assume that people are looking at this right now. So let's go to what you do when you want to speak during the public comment period. So this is assuming you are watching or streaming. So you raise your hand icon if you're on the Zoom, and you press *9 if you're on your phone. Wow, Michelle, this is a different set of instructions. So I'm just going to assume that everyone's looking at this and that you're going to figure your way out. If you're on the phone, please check the website. It'll give you all the information. And with that very confusing introduction, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would like to dedicate the meeting tonight to Fairfax. Fairfax just experienced a very exciting election day. It was calm. The campaign was cool, and it was, I would say, compassionate and respectful. And so I'd like to dedicate the meeting to that. I was very proud to be a member of the Fairfax community in the last couple of months, watching how everybody moved so gracefully through the campaigning. So let's wish for that on the big world level. And let's go ahead and start our meeting. So, Michelle, could we please begin with a roll call?
It's not a mayor. Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Goddard.
I am here. Thank you very much, Michelle. And then I'd like to ask for a motion for an approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? All right, great. So we have a motion, Kohler, and a second, Ackerman. Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. And so, moving forward, we're going to begin with the land acknowledgement. And so I will state that the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are on the unceded land of the Coast Mewoc people of current day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. And again, thank you to Stephanie Hellman for bringing that forth and making this a new tradition for the Fairfax Town Council. And I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character, the motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. We will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, can be continued to another meeting, and any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to waive that 11:30 rule. Now, announcements this evening. We do have some vacancies on boards and commissions. We have up to three vacancies on the Climate Action Committee, and they are doing extremely exciting work right now. If you are interested in climate, please step in. You would be very welcomed. The Tree Committee has one vacancy. Parks and Rec Commission has one vacancy. Open Space Committee has one vacancy, and the Measure F Oversight Committee has two vacancies. We are currently working on the project that Mayor Kohler reintroduced last year, which is our Citizen of the Year Award. And the nominations are due on November 1st to the Park and Rec. And as always, please remember that the Fairfax Food Pantry continues to operate and serve people every Saturday from 8:30 to 10:30, and that is located at the Fairfax Community Church at 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And again, as always, please, please go ahead and subscribe on the town website in order to receive our town agendas, our newsletters, and any of our updates by email. So moving right along, we are going to open the open time for public expression. And this is a time for the public to address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Individuals are limited to three minutes and groups to five minutes if you are actually an official group, and it's subject to the mayor's discretion. And the council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly requires and limits the right of council to discuss any un-agendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature. So with no further ado, let's go ahead and open our public open time. And Garrett, do you have that timer somewhere visible so folks who are speaking and myself can take a look at it? Okay. And thank you, everyone, for attending to the clock, so no one has to be interrupted. So let's open up, and first speaker, please.
Yes, the first speaker is Jody Timms.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am going to do my best to race through my time here, but I might need five minutes because I'm speaking both for the commission and for the Climate Action Committee. Jody Timms Cascade Drive. So in terms of the Commission on Aging, our meeting is tomorrow, and it is on COVID-19 and fresh perspectives on mental health issues. So for anybody who might be interested, that's tomorrow morning at 10:00. Our Breakfast with Friends and the Age Friendly Forum this month are on November 18th. That's because of the holiday the following week, and also our Age Friendly Fairfax Task Force meets on the 20th. So if you have any interest in those, they're on the website for the town. You can check them out. Also, I attended two different things I wanted to mention this past week. AARP held a Northern California Regional Roundtable on how to create equitable, age-friendly communities. It was very excellent, and I learned a lot. So I just wanted to mention that. And then yesterday, I was also able to facilitate the monthly meeting of the Neighborhood Response Groups in all of Marin. So we're really trying to get organized, and particularly working now with Marin Villages to help locate and support our most vulnerable residents around all the disaster preparedness that's necessary. So just quickly then about the Climate Action Committee. As you know, a year and a half ago, you all passed the Climate Emergency Resolution calling on zero emissions by 2030. That's a big job for us to accomplish. And we've been hosting a monthly community conversation for the public to talk about the Climate Action Plan and the initiatives that we have tentatively in our draft. Next Monday, on November 9th, at 6:30, we'll have a Zoom call focusing on the strategies around transportation in our Climate Action Plan. And if you think about COVID and what it is taking for us to curtail it, and imagine if we suddenly understood how lethal greenhouse gas emissions were, and we realized that within 10 years, transportation needed to be completely decarbonized, what would we have to do as a city, a town, a world in order to really accomplish that? And that will be the subject on Monday night for the hour, the transportation initiatives. We are hoping to move electric, everything electric, as soon as we can in Fairfax, and we would love to engage with the community about how that would look and how that might happen. One other thing that we... Oops, where's my note? Here we go. As some of you know, we've had a survey out, and we encourage residents of Fairfax to take the survey if you have not. But some of the results that have come in, I wanted to just share two things. We asked folks if they would like us to incentivize a transition from gas-powered vehicles to electric vehicles, and 65% of Fairfax residents said they see that as a high priority or they want to have that happen, make this happen. So how we might do that will be part of the conversation. Also, hosting, one of our actions would be to host an electric bike and vehicle event. 52% of Fairfax would like to see that happen. And then another question was about installing more EV chargers in public parking lots, workplaces, and multifamily buildings. 62% of Fairfax residents either see that as high priority or say, "Make that happen." Installing more bike lanes, 58%, and installing more pathways and sidewalks, 69%. So I think there's support for a lot of the ideas that we want to bring forward, and we want to hear more from the community. So we really encourage you to join us next Monday for that hour and every second Monday for the next three months. Each month, we'll be looking at a different subject or strategy that's part of the Climate Action Plan. And all of that is detailed, again, on the town's website, but also on the Climate Action Committee's website. So thank you very much.
Jody, thank you so much. What time is the conversation?
6:30. Yes, on climate change is 6:30 on Monday, the night.
Thank you so much for the reports and the hard work. Okay, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Pamela Miggs, followed by Kirsten Asher, followed by Frank Egger.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was just curious and wondering what happened to our strip being. It sort of disappeared, and I don't want it to disappear. I want it to come back. I thought we had an agreement or something about it being done, but I can't recall exactly when, but it seems like it's going on and on and on. Can you just check into that and get back to the community? Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Pam. It is coming. It is not gone.
Next speaker? The next speaker is Kirsten Asher, followed by Frank Egger.
Hello, everyone. I have just a quick question with Ray Moritz's presentation. Can we comment on that now, or do we wait till after?
We are going to wait until after, and that would be the appropriate timeline. After we've heard what he has to say, then there'll be time for comment.
Terrific. Okay, I'll end now and speak later. Thank you so much.
Okay, bye-bye. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Frank Egger.
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. I just have a follow-up question to Jody Timms' age-friendly report. Fairfax has had its first public power shut-off, and we have two senior citizen project homes in Fairfax, Victory Village and the Bennett House. And I'm wondering if the large generators have been installed for those two senior projects yet. I know they weren't installed a month or two ago, and I'm wondering if they've got them installed now because we may be having more of these public power shut-offs. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Since I'm within 1,000 feet, I've got a notice that they were going to be doing that, and I think there's 30-day comment period on the notice. So I don't think that they're installed yet, but it's the Bay Area Quality Management District who's giving that notice out.
So can we, instead of doing a back-and-forth right now, Garrett, can we ask that you... Because I know there's multiples of us who have checked into this on our own time. Garrett, could you come back with some information? Because I know it's a great concern to the community, and especially with Victory Village being so new. So that would be really helpful, so we all hear it at the same time, just a report on where those generators and that process is at this point. Garrett?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I can hear you, so if you want to... Yes, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That could be for December to give you time to really look into it.
Okay.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Next is Deborah Benson, followed by Joe McGary.
Hello, Deborah Benson Cascade Drive. Is now the time to speak on items on the consent calendar?
No, it's not, Deborah. It's just the open time for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, well, then I would just like to echo Pam's request to get the strip being on Cascade Drive done because it's really scary. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by a phone-in speaker. So, Joe?
Good evening, council.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. I just wanted to take a moment and congratulate Barbara and Bruce on their reelections last night, and also take a moment to congratulate Chance, who I know is listening. Congratulate him on his big victory. And also wanted to recognize John and his service to Fairfax over his three terms on council. Yeah, and thank you for your words, Renee, about the campaign season, and it was memorable and something that I feel blessed to have taken part in. I'd also like to step back a little bit on the evening of the first RESJ, on the eve of the first RESJ meeting, to step back to the meeting October 7th and provide a little bit of perspective on some of the troubling commentary that went on that night. While we were speaking about the police chief search, I'd offer that maybe now, the heat of that moment has passed, and folks have been re-elected, and that maybe there could be some reflection on the narrative that became popular that evening, that activists in town and in Marin were the problem rather than the racist institutions and policies that they're protesting against. I know from speaking with folks on the RESJ that it was deflating to hear that shared. And there's just an opportunity now as councilmembers on the RESJ go to share space with them to do this important work, that you recognize that these folks who have mustered up the courage to make themselves available for the RESJ are in fact taking part in a form of activism, or more to the point, taking their existing activism to a whole new level by being part of the committee. Yeah, so it was troubling for me to hear that tonight, that night, because activism is important, and never more so than these times. And we want to be open to hearing it and doing our best to support it. And I don't think we ever want to go down the path that, frankly, that the White House and other places across the country have gone down of making these peaceful protesters the problem and not the issues that they're speaking out against. So thank you for hearing me out on that, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, as always, for the reminder. Hope to see you soon. Next, do we have any other speakers, Michelle?
We did have a hand raised from a call-in listener. I hope I didn't inadvertently lower your hand. I'm going... Do you want to raise it again by pressing *9 if you want to speak? Your telephone number ends in 706. Okay, well, we have one more speaker. I will go to the next speaker, and if the telephone caller wants to speak, they should press *9 again. Thank you. So the other speaker is Mark Bell, and you're unmuted.
Hi, it's Zachary Ling Shenber, and hi. I wanted to speak about the lighting at night, that it's still awfully bright and really bright. And I thought that there was an intent to put some shading over the lighting or something to make it less bright. It's like, ooh. It's just, I think it's not healthy for us to be walking around and be blinded by this because what happens is when you leave that area that's so bright, you can't see anything because your eyes are blinded from it being so bright. I'm thinking especially of the bridge that's at the end of Dominga and beginning of Creek. It's really, really a pretty bridge, very beautiful, and the lights that are there are turned off now. There's no more of those lights. And those lights are so much nicer than the streetlights. So I think it would be great if something could be done about the brightness of the lighting at night. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ling Shen. Okay. Is anyone else? The phone number is that?
The phone caller is... Sorry, I did that. That was my fault. Okay. So the phone caller. I have unmuted you. You might need to unmute yourself by pressing *6 now. We can't hear you. Do you have...
There we go.
I was actually trying to sign up to speak during the presentation about Sixth Walsh Lane.
Oh, yes, we'll get to that. It is the first public hearing item, so we're not there yet. I can't promise you...
But how do I sign back on now? How do I get back in?
You just go ahead and call back in, in the same way you did.
So when you press *9 on the phone, it raises a hand on my screen, and that's how I know you want to speak on something. So when we're on that item, then you could raise your hand again by pressing *9 at that time.
Okay, but do I hang up now?
Yes.
If you want, you can just stay on and listen, but either way...
Oh, yeah.
Then I will just stay on then, okay.
Yeah, it's fine. I will have to mute you again, and you'll have to raise your hand again when it's public comment time on that item.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So seeing no other open time comment, we are going to move forward. We now have a presentation about the maintenance of our trees on the town-owned properties, and we've invited our town arborist, Ray Moritz, to give us a report and some suggestions about proper maintenance. So, Ray, thanks for being here. I know you've had a long day, and we're eager to hear from you.
Thank you. Today, I was up in the foothills of the Sierra working near Reading. And one of the things I was photographing a lot is the tremendous amount of mortality of riparian zone trees. Up there, it's mainly poplars mixed in with a little bit of big-leaf maple and other common riparian trees. But the mortality is simply unbelievable, and all one has to do is take a trip through the Sierra foothills to see that climate change is not coming. It's definitely here. Regarding our redwoods in Perry Park, in both stands, either side of the City Hall, the trees are not growing as would be expected of redwood. The logging of that area, there was logging in that area, particularly over in the stand between the Women's Club and the Children's Center. And that stand is very undersized for when one considers that much of it is regrowth, what we call second-growth trees from the logging that occurred probably the early part of the last century or maybe even the late 1800s. I'm not sure. But many of the trees, the mother stems were cut, and what we have today are daughter stems. And when you walk through there, you can see the old decayed mother stems and even level areas on their stumps where you can see that they were, in fact, logged. And the stems surrounding those stumps are daughter stems. Genetically, they're all one tree. All the daughter stems around a single trunk are actually a single multi-stem tree. But the thing about the redwoods is it is an amazing species. It is a tree species apart. It is unlike any other tree species in many ways. When I first saw that the cutting had occurred in the stand between the Women's Club and the Children's Center, I assumed that it was something brought on by the Police Department concerns or something because in other communities where there has been trouble in parks, they have limbed up the trees and cut the brush so that the police could see more clearly. But I didn't think to ask anybody at City Hall about what had gone on. I was very disappointed to see it because what happens when you prune the basil sprouts of redwood trees like that, particularly in a stand like that, is you increase the amount of wind blowing through there. And when you increase the amount of wind, you increase the water stress of the trees. So I was very disappointed to see that that cutting had occurred. Fortunately, redwoods are very resilient, and if we do the right things, we will be able to bring back that growth. Redwood, after disturbance... Redwood after disturbance has the ability to grow as much as if you really do the right things, as much as six feet in a single year. So I must add that I've not seen any regrowth following that cutting, but it is too early to really expect that. So redwoods, what they like is, first of all, they like each other. Redwoods, after a period of of decades, will have evolved to have a single root system. The roots of the separate trees will graft to the roots of other trees. And in fact, trees that are near a water source, such as near our creek, can actually pass water through their root system to the root systems of the other trees that are connected with them. And but that probably isn't enough, because redwoods like a thick mulch. They like having an on the ground debris of six to as much as 12 inches deep. And in that area between the Women's Club and the Children's Center is highly used because of the picnic tables and whatnot. The other stand is also highly used at least once a week during the summer. But it's highly used and the soil has been sort of scarified. There are areas of that stance that still have a decent mulch layer. Not nearly as thick as as redwoods would prefer. So I think it would be a good idea for the town when when tree companies come in and remove trees for the town that they dump some of the mulch and perhaps we could get volunteer groups to help spread it. And certainly, when they do tree work on the site of that stand, if they would what's called broadcast chip, which is as they chip the debris, they have the truck move the the tube of the chipper back and forth and spray it over the ground, spray the chips over the ground. And that will be helpful in restoring that stand. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that stand to start growing at the rate I would expect. I've seen redwood trees and irrigated home landscapes grow as much as four feet in diameter in as many years. So redwoods are capable of growing extremely fast. But they do need water. I know some people have brought up the idea of irrigating the redwoods. That would be great. I don't. I think it would be very difficult to get permits to actually use creek water to irrigate it, pumping it up into the stand. But and MMWD water is not the cheapest way to irrigate trees. But if we can mulch it and start that mulch working into the upper layers of soil, will get better rain infiltration into the soil and better what's called groundwater recharge. So one of the problems in the stand is that all the scarification of people passing through the stand and walking in the stand and partying in the stand have scarified the surface of the soil and has made it more or less water repellent. So what we want to do is get those organic acids from the decaying mulch to move down through the soil and start building good soil structure, opening up the soil to get better groundwater recharge. That's what I would suggest moving forward is to develop a good groundwater recharge. That, of course, would be better using composted materials, but of course, there's an expense to composted materials. They run about $34 per cubic yard. But if we start composting our own materials first applied as mulch, then it will start moving those organic acids in. Another theory I heard regarding the cutting of the basil sprouts and stems was that it was a fire hazard. Redwood groves, again, are a species apart from others. They're the only conifer I know that is highly fire resistant. So I had no concerns. My company and I myself work on fire issues all over the state. And in fact, today I was working on another fire issue up in the Sierra. So we work on fire recovery plans and and do fire behavior studies throughout the state. And redwood is exceptional in its fire resistance. So I would quash if anybody has the idea that that stand was somehow a fire hazard, they are highly mistaken. And I'm sure that Todd Lando, who used to be the head of Fire Safe Marin, would agree with me 100%. So again, that is not a reason for the cutting that occurred. I don't know that anybody really knows at this point what the reason was, but that certainly is not a valid reason. Regarding the other stand over where we have our farmer's market, that stand is doing, I think, quite a bit better than the stand between the Women's Club, in spite of the fact that very little of that stand fronts the creek. But for one reason or another, quite possibly because of the oh, now I'm spacing on the name, the big barn on the Noel.
Pavilion?
Yeah. That probably breaks the wind and allows that stand to be less windy. And quite possibly, it's doing better because of that. It too, we should be on the guard to protect its root systems and to protect its soil and keep its soil open to water infiltration. So again, that stand should be we should get as much mulch on it as we can. Regarding getting mulch from tree companies, you want to get mulch that is what we call clean mulch, which is free of the seed of invasive species. So if they've got anything like broom in there or acacia, we don't want it. We want mulch that's like maybe from oak trees or pine trees or whatever, but nothing that has the seed of invasive species so that we don't have to deal with that problem down the road. Any questions?
Thank you, Ray. Bruce?
Is there, thank you, Ray, is there any danger that if we get mulch from a tree company and the tree company has recently done work taking down a tree that had sudden oak death, that that might bring the sudden oak death with it? Do we need to be?
No. No, actually, that's not a real problem. That's not a problem. And redwood, the basil sprouts are susceptible to sudden oak death. But the main stems themselves are not susceptible. So sudden oak death is not expected to have any effect on the growth of and and health of redwoods. Because tan bark oak is quite prevalent in redwood stands and is highly susceptible, probably the most susceptible member of the oak family that is susceptible to SOD. It has not resulted in any problems for the redwoods.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go for it, Stephanie.
Thanks for coming, Ray. So I was doing a, we've had a couple of cleanups last few weeks, and I was there on at the park, I think it was this past Sunday. And I was noticing the tree, it's ribboned, just it's on the pavilion side of the creek at the creek bed, and it's, I mean, it looks black. I mean, it looks like petrified to the untrained eye, which is mine. It looks dead and it's slanted. And so I'm not sure, Garrett, you know, what our plans are for these ones that are really not contested, or there's no debate whether they need to be removed. But I'm very concerned about that one in particular and its proximity to the park. But also, did I understand you, Ray, that if you can you chip, can you chip if we were to, when we remove some of these trees that are dead? You can chip them for mulch? And would a dead tree such as this one have value? In that regard?
Actually, actually, it would. Actually, the faster they decay, the better. Because the decay organisms in mulch release those organic acids that help build soil structure. And and that soil structure greatly improves the aeration of the soil, which makes it a healthier root environment. And it opens up, of course, for infiltration of water. And as that water infiltrates, it releases things in the soil that are actually toxic to roots like carbon monoxide and what am I trying methane gas is also produced by bacterial action in the soil. So once you open up the soil, it releases those toxic materials in the soil that are produced through decay, and it adds the materials to the soil.
Is that is that a service? Is tree removal and chipping mulching all in one? Is that a service?
A service.
Well, is that something you can do in one relative effort?
Yeah, if they're removing a tree, they should be mulching, spraying the chips around to be mulch. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We don't want them to carry with their with their chipping is extracted from the soil. And those nutrients and whatnot were brought up into the tree with the tree's root system. So we want a complete closed loop. We want anything the trees have taken out of the soil, just like agricultural crops extract from the soil. We want to put back into the soil. So the way to put those minerals, those free minerals and everything back into the soils to make sure when we remove a tree in the stand, for whatever reason, it should be added back to the stand as mulch.
And just final question, thank you. Those daughter stems that you're referring to, what would motivate someone to cut them if you weren't paid to do so? Could you plant those and would they grow as trees?
No.
So why would somebody cut them?
I have no idea. I was shocked when I saw it. I take a walk there numerous evenings per week on my way home from work. I take a walk through the redwood stands just to sort of transition from work to home. And I was shocked when I saw that.
Yeah.
I don't know what motivated someone except perhaps a motivation of thinking that they were doing some good
Right.
by doing that. And that's when I heard people say that they they thought maybe it was for fire prevention. I was like, oh, God, no.
Yeah.
They're absolutely mistaken. If that was the reason it was done.
So thank you. And just real quick, so counsel, if we could just ask questions, if there are many comments, and we'll check with the public how many people want to speak if there are. And we want to continue this conversation, we can agendize it at a later meeting, as this was only put in the agenda as a presentation on tree maintenance. So any questions from council, and then we'll see if there's some public comments. Barbara?
So I have a couple of questions. The first one, I guess, from what I understand, we have no idea who cut those. Ray doesn't know, and I understand our town manager has no idea who cut those stems. That's correct, right? Right?
Yeah.
Garrett?
Correct. Okay. Work in meeting contract for it.
What? We didn't ask for it. Nobody did it.
Right.
On town.
We're not, you know. Yes, we don't know who did perform the work.
Okay, and then the question for Ray is so my information, because I've done cleanups, hazardous waste cleanups in Fairfax, is usually groundwater is about six inches to 12 inches under the surface. And my question is, on the redwood trees, when you mentioned the single root situation, how deep do those roots go? Especially because we're next to the creek. So I imagine groundwater is pretty close to the surface. So how how deep do we usually expect the roots of redwood trees to go?
Redwoods are the shallowest rooted of their associate species.
Okay, any idea what that means? Is that four inches or?
Well, 90% of the root system of most any tree is in the upper three feet of soil. And for redwoods, it's probably more like in the upper two feet of soil. And the absorbing roots that absorb water and take in nutrients quite often in conjunction with symbiotic fungi that take in nutrients and water are 90% of them are in the upper foot of soil. People might say, well, there in the summer, there's no water in the upper foot of soil. But they're mistaken. If you grab soil and put it in your hand and you think it's all dry and there's no water there, you're probably mistaken. Because water molecules adhere to what are called clay micelles. And because water molecules are charged and clay molecules are charged, they're attached on. And trees and fungi know how to extract that water. Even though we would think this soil is as dry as a bone, it probably actually has water in it.
Well, that's where I was kind of going with that is I think if we were to do some watering, we might not need to do as much because groundwater is close to the surface. Thank you, Ray.
Any other pressing questions from council? John?
I was just I mean, the the damage to the the sprouts around the the bases of the trees. I mean, if something is there, but what what's your recommendation is the best way to help that rectify that situation? Just watering and mulch and that's it or?
Yeah, improving. Yeah, improving soil health. Watering and mulch will will be the best ways to do it. Trees in the dry season. Well, first of all, almost most trees do not want to be watered on a schedule that you would say water a lawn. They would like a deep watering that gets moist down to 18 inches deep. Infrequently. So during, if you're going to do dry season irrigation, what you want to do is water like every three weeks. But water for like six hours every three weeks. So that you get that water to move down deep into the soil relatively deep, 18 inches. Of moisture. And so it's a quite different type of irrigation than you would use on flowers or grass.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here here's my recommendation, Ray, if you can hang on for just a little bit longer. Just to hear the public and we will see. How best to approach people's comments and questions that may arise. So if I could ask, please, all of you who are tuned in on the Zoom call right now and have access to your little blue icon hand. Could you raise your hand if you're interested in speaking? And please raise it now because I need to count so we can see if we need to schedule another meeting to discuss this. I know how important it is, but we also have a long agenda. So please raise your hands if you want to talk about trees. And I realize there may be some phones. So I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think we can go forward with this. Please make your comments as briefly as possible. I think everyone knows that we have quite an agenda. And if we need to reschedule a time to talk more deeply about these things and get the questions answered, we will do so. So let's go ahead and again, give three minutes. If you don't need it, please cede it to someone else to just move forward and we'll take the first speaker, please.
First speaker is Kirsten Asher, followed by Deborah Lee, followed by Pamela Mix. Kirsten, I unmuted you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Ray, for your presentation. I actually really agree with Ray about his concerns with those redwoods in that area between the children's center and the women's club. I should tell you that overall, after noticing the red tags on 14 of those trees, a few of us citizens actually hired a consulting arborist to walk through the area recently where 14 trees, mostly redwood, were tagged. We simply wanted a, you know, second opinion and and most of that's going to be spoken to about. On the tree committee meeting on 11/9, if public wants to attend that, I encourage that and I hope the public knows about that. But for the sake of this meeting, our arborist is very concerned about the state of these trees as well. He said that not only do we need to water them deeply every 14 days for four to six hours, given the drought that we've experienced over the last four to five years. We need to maintain them more regularly by checking on soil compaction, potential aeration, trimming and mulching. Rather than just ignoring them, you know, when our trees present issues. Excuse me, I should say until our trees present issues. We've confirmed with the town that watering has indeed not occurred at all. On these redwood trees, the entire four to five year drought cycle. We feel that non-tree care practice needs to shift and active care needs to go forward of these trees. And especially those impacted by the drought, he was very concerned about those. And let's see, he said also that, you know, he just agreed in many ways what Ray was saying, he agrees with as well. And I'd like to add also, just as a side note, that there is a medrone and another non-redwood that Ray did mark across the creek that is leaning towards the kiddie park. And that those two trees are really in danger of falling and we're just kind of wondering why they haven't been removed. I know they're on an emergency cut. But those two are very, very dangerous and and their proximity toward to the kiddie park is is a concern. And just overall, I'll end by saying that, you know, it was pretty, how do I say this? Our arborist was pretty shocked when he saw that the the condition of the redwoods between the women's park and the children's center. And really was questioning why we hadn't acknowledged as a town that there was a drought. And why they were in the condition that they were. And to Ray's point, the trees over by the grassy park are in better condition. He didn't mention the wind aspect of that. He did state that that's probably due to the water that the grass is getting in that area. Anyway, I appreciate the attention to this very much and I hope we can go forward with better tree care. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Deborah Lee, followed by Pamela Mix, followed by Mark Bell.
Hello, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I'm also a member of the tree committee. I have had an email correspondence with a member of town staff. Regarding the cutting of the redwood trees, which was offered by Fire Safe Marin to alleviate fire danger and was was ordered by a member of our town staff. So this is yet another instance of the town staff not following the tree ordinance, which says that anyone who's cutting a tree of a certain dimension and height at breast level needs to go through the tree committee. This was a huge mistake. I'm sure with good intent, but it was a huge mistake. So so it's kind of like a runaway train. And I think that town needs to find a way to compensate for this mistake by by following Ray's advice to compost rather than mulch, expensive as it may be. And by following his advice in watering these trees, which are the jewel of our town, to see if we can grow them to four feet and, I mean, four foot in four years, you know, I can't remember exactly what you said, but to get them to grow naturally. So I think this is a, this is a big wake up call. I think this is the third time that I know of that town staff has overridden our ordinance and not gone through the tree committee. And had they done so, we would have consulted with Ray, most likely, to find out whether this was a good idea or not. So this this just has to stop. So I thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. I do want to just reiterate what Garrett did mention and that is that this was not. This was not done at the order or request of any of the town staff. There was a lot of tree work going on, both through Fire Safe Marin and PG&E along many areas. They also they also pruned back and cut all around Deer Park and the entrance to the Fairfax San Antonio Children's Center. And we will look into it, so thank you so much for pointing it out. But I do want you to know there was no direct request for this work to be done by town staff. So thank you, and let's move on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Pamela Mix, followed by Mark Bell, followed by Chance Cutrono. Pam, you're unmuted.
Hello. Boy, is this a sad story for Fairfax. I mean, those redwood trees are sort of the heart and soul. I, I did, I did.
We can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We could hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reiterating, it's sad for Fairfax. Those trees are like the heart and soul of the town, especially that area. I mean, this is just a shocking. Ray, thank you for an amazing report. I feel that we can, we can go forward with your knowledge and experience. I have a couple of questions. One is about the the packing of the soil in that area. Could there be a care plan after? Maybe we should take that and rope it off for a while to let this kind of regenerate. I don't know, you're the expert. That's one question. And then maybe for the tree committee, I don't know. I mean, I helped revamp that that tree committee, but it's been many years. And Ray, you were there with me. Maybe there should be a maintenance policy in there on on an arborist checking on these trees once a year, rather than I think I heard three years. But it's just like it's happened before, it's happening again, but this time it's very damaging and at a big cost. Not only to the town financially, but to a lot of citizens who really feel very close to that. That wonderful little nest in there, so that's my. My statement.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Next speaker, please.
Next is Mark Bell, followed by Chance Cutrono, followed by Frank Egger. Mark or Ling Shen?
Yeah, Mark on Mark Bell and Dominga and Ling Shen's comments, so we can do two at once as she wants to echo what Kirsten said. The other thing I want to point out is. We've blown over $30,000 on the striping deal in Cascade or over way, way over 30,000. Spend $75,000 on a bus shelter. We spend $20,000, $30,000 to wash streets. And. We can't irrigate trees. And I agree with Pam, you know, maybe people look at the bus shelter and think this is Fairfax. Well, it's not to me. I just went through the park the other day and I was really shocked by what it looked like. You know, that park is really the heart. And when you look at redwood trees, just emasculated, it's really sick. They should be living for hundreds of years. And that's what the town is about. The same thing like the town is about having ridge lines with no houses on it. The park with trees, redwood trees is a major part of that. So instead of spending $700 on a plaque for the next thing, let's look at actually caring for these trees and not wasting money on this other stuff, which is really absurd. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker, please.
I wanted to say something else.
I wasn't sure if Ling Shen was going to speak.
Oh, oh, thank you so much. Yeah, what I wanted to say is that about the two bay trees that have been cut into this really weird square cut, like what is it supposed to be like a chair or something? It looks really, really ugly. I mean, it looks awful, I think. And I don't know what the idea was, but I think that would be great to improve on the looks of that because that's really not a good look.
Are you talking about?
The square thing, like the straight, straight angle cut of those bay trees. It's like, what is that about?
You're talking about by the picnic tables, correct?
Yeah, 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 there's two of them. Now there's another one in the, is that so open? Yeah, those two areas, it's just, it doesn't look good. I, I don't think it's just me, but I think it really doesn't look good. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Chance Cutrono, followed by Frank Egger, followed by Morgan Hall. So Chance, you're unmuted.
Thanks, good evening, council, and thank you, Ray, for your presentation. I thought your comments were spot on and I just had a couple of quick questions. The first, I just wanted to totally support the idea of any of these trees that are that are limbed up or the dead trees that are removed because of liability, turning those into mulch for soil, you know, infiltrate, like, you know, water infiltration, water absorption, retention. I think that's fantastic idea. A question I had for Ray was whether or not it might make sense or it would be okay to keep some of the larger dead trees or, you know, downed logs in the park as, you know, large snag habitat. Part, you know, it's it's ecologically vital and I'm just thinking about how this little, these pocket parks are part of that connection for for birds and things like that. And I was wondering what your thoughts are either about leaving down trees in that, down logs in that way or keeping portions of those dead trees standing upright for that sort of habitat. The other question that I had was what are your thoughts on on the the best type of? Way to actually water these trees? Is it just a, you know, sprinkler with an impact head and you're just spreading it around? Or are we soaking particular areas? It would be good to get a sense of what what might be best there. Thank you.
Um, Ray, that's a lot to take on, so I'm wondering if you might. We might pose those questions to you and you might bring them back in a form of a report to give us some of these suggestions. Garrett, would that be something that you could follow up with Ray on? Because it would be good to document, obviously, this and then get some more advice and so that we can move forward.
Okay.
So we don't, yeah, because he's a wealth of knowledge, but we don't want to put you on it right now. But we should have it in a report. So thank you. Any other speakers?
Could do is have an FAQ document that we post on the website. That might be a good place to do that near the tree committee.
Okay, an FAQ, but also we should probably get some recommendations from Ray officially. Okay, terrific. Let's see. I, let's take the last two commenters, please. I had tried to cut it off so that we could move forward with the agenda. So we've got, what I see is two more and then we'll move on.
Okay, the last two speakers are Frank Egger and Jane Richardson-Mack. We will start with Frank and you're unmuted.
Thank you, Frank Egger Metaway. The stripping of the burrows and the cutting of the third growth trees took place about six weeks ago. I had made a public records act request of your town manager, Garrett Toy. And he he responded very quickly and said he had no idea who had who had done the cutting in in that, in those groves. I had been on a tour with 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 a consulting arborist that a number of local residents paid for. And I also last week spoke to a distant arborist, so I had emailed photos of the groves on Park, Park, Park Road. And you know, we're in the fifth year of a drought. And these are the recommendations as a result of those, of the discussions with another arborist, a third arborist. First of all, he said Fairfax needs a tree healthcare component. And 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 we also need a risk assessment for the redwood groves and other trees. The 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 redwood, those redwood groves are drought stressed and need irrigation, a temporary rain bird setup and even a drip system for the longer term if the drought continues. Fire is native to redwood trees. And he's, he recommends purchasing crushed oyster shells from Jericho Products in Petaluma. He said oyster shells mimic what a fire does for a redwood grove. Oyster shell lime adds the same nutrients as a fire does and trees need calcium. Redwoods also thrive on floods and the last floods in Perry Park were 1982 and 2005. So it's been a while since since that park flooded. He suggested deadwitting the redwoods and removing the widow makers and 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 trying to maintain them before you make decisions to cut them down. The the stripping of the redwood burrows of new shoots and third growth is, and Ray has mentioned this this evening, especially during the drought has damaged the health of the groves. One of the redwoods cut was seven to eight inches in diameter and had 25 rings, which we, it's been there for 25 years. No tree removal permit was given in Fairfax, by Fairfax, and we know that. And it, we need to. And, uh, uh, it, we need to find out who actually cut, did the work, stripped the burrows and cut the trees. And then just lastly, um, the 100-year-old sequoia tree, number 2599, it's the Sierra redwood in Doc Edgar Park. Uh, it has a disease common to sequoias planted in low altitude sites. They're, they're usually planted in, they're grown in a high Sierra, but low altitude sites, if they get a disease, it's called, uh, Botryis Furia, and, and it needs some attention. That's all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you for looking into this so deeply. Uh, I think we have one more speaker.
Yes, the last speaker is Jane Richardson-Mack, and I have unmuted you, Jane.
My comment. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, great. Ray, thank you as always for your, uh, intelligent take on the trees and try to help us. I, I, I think one of the problems here is that the tree committee is not involved in, I mean, we're not invited to be involved. We are ready to be involved and would like to be involved in anything concerning the town trees. Uh, so far, that's not been forthcoming. I mean, trees have been cut down and we asked Garrett Toy to never do that again without notifying us. And yet it happened repeatedly. And, um, it's extremely upsetting. And now we have an issue where evidently redwood trees have been cut down and nobody seems to know who did it or who authorized it or who is responsible. Uh, the only thing everybody agrees on is like a really bad thing. It wasn't good for the trees. It's not good for the town. I'm confused as to how these things can happen. And I think the way to correct it is to have a better dialogue with Ray and the tree committee and figure out what, what is, what do we need to do for the town trees? A, a maintenance program, uh, on a regular basis, quarterly, annually, whatever it is, a report written and submitted by somebody who knows what they're talking about. And, and definitely a budget for taking care of the trees. I'm not happy about the amount of money that's been spent by the town on facilitators and experts for this, that, and whatever have you. And we can't just have a regular maintenance for our town trees, which are our crowning glory. It's like the signature of our town. Um, I'd like to see a plan for the town trees, all the town trees. I would think the tree committee should be involved on every single step of it. Approving anything, any major maintenance, any removal, um, even just regular maintenance. Evidently this, this redwood cutting was some kind of like low-key regular maintenance or something that went radically wrong. So, um, I'd just say, please use your tree committee. We, we're here. We're ready to serve. We, we want to help. And, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Um, those are excellent suggestions. And we will move forward with many of what you are all sharing. Uh, that is the last of the, uh, public comments. And so, um, I think that what's left for us to do, unless any council members have something that you'd like to make sure you've mentioned or passed on to Ray or Garrett, then we will excuse Ray with gratitude and, uh, move forward. Okay. So I guess the next opportunity for the public and for everyone to tune in, uh, is to the tree committee meeting on the, um, on the ninth, uh, which is the Monday night. Um, and Ray will be joining the tree committee. So, um, thank you, everyone, for the comments and we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Um, and looking down consent, are there any council members who would like to, um, make any brief comments, uh, without pulling anything? And, uh, I do have one thing that I would like to, to take off and read. So Barbara.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, congratulations on our finance department getting our Tyler Incode software up and running and our first report. I know it will be fine tuned. There were a couple of things that I saw. But, um, we are there. And I think when I was vice mayor, back when Peter Lacks was mayor, is when we first really started digging into this. And also want to thank Mike Vivret and Janet Garvin, who has been trying to retire since January, who's really pitched in to continue to help. So this is, uh, really going to help us in the, and I want to thank them for that. So that's my only comment. I have no interest in pulling anything.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you, Renee, for, uh, number eight. I think that was you, right?
Yeah, I actually, um, was going to read it and I will read it. Um, I know it's, it's, I, I asked them to sort of make it as succinct as possible, but this is a resolution that was, uh, signed by nearly a hundred cities all along the, uh, the coast of California. So I was going to take that moment. I think it's important for the community to know what Fairfax is, uh, supporting and opposing. Anyone else want to make a brief comment on consent? Um, I will go ahead and read this and then we'll go to the public, uh, for any consent comments. Okay, so, um, I was approached by the Surf Rider Foundation and the Environmental Action Committee of West Marin to participate with, uh, cities and towns and counties all over, um, California. Some just off of the coast and mostly coastal communities to support a resolution. Um, this is a resolution of the town council of the town of Fairfax opposing offshore oil and gas drilling and exploration activities, including seismic airgun blasting. Whereas in California, hundreds of thousands of jobs and billions of dollars of the state's domestic, uh, gross domestic product depend on clean water, oil-free beaches and abundant fish and wildlife. And whereas the vast majority of Californians, of California's ocean wealth stems from our tourism and recreation sector, which benefits from a healthy ocean and coast. And whereas offshore oil and gas drilling and exploration places coastal communities at economic and ecological risk from oil spills and the pollution brought by routine drilling operations and onshore industrialization, threatening the livelihoods of commercial and recreational fishermen and small businesses that rely on tourism and clean and healthy ocean and beaches. And whereas offshore drilling may require significant onshore infrastructure, such as pipelines or refineries, which would harm the character of California's coastline, contribute to the loss of coastal habitats that provide natural mitigation against coastal hazards such as wetlands. And whereas offshore drilling and exploration perpetuates our ties to greenhouse gas pollution and contributes to climate change and the resulting sea level rise, extreme weather, seawater intrusion and storm surge. And whereas the harmful impacts from offshore oil and gas drilling and exploration anywhere along the California coastline could extend far beyond immediately surrounding areas and severely impact communities that rely on the robust economy of marine industry. And whereas the current administration or potentially past administration has expressed interest in opening the Pacific Ocean to offshore oil and gas drilling and exploration, which includes the use of seismic air guns, which fire intense blasts of compressed air that rank just behind military explosives as the loudest source of noise in the ocean every 10 to 12 seconds, 24 hours a day for months on end. And whereas seismic airgun blasting to explore for oil and gas deposits has been proven to injure, disrupt, displace and even kill marine life, such as whales, which rely on their hearing to find food and mate and can impair the health of many fish species, including those of commercial importance. And whereas offshore hydraulic fracturing and other unconventional oil extraction techniques, such as acid fracturing, matrix acidizing, gravel packing and cyclic steam injection collectively referred to here as fracking and other well stimulation provide another means to expand offshore oil and gas extraction. And whereas offshore fracking and other well stimulation release harmful toxic pollutants into the marine environment. And whereas the 2019 to 2024 draft proposed five-year OCS leasing program is in violation of the Endangered Species Act, the Coastal Zone Management Act, the National Marine Sanctuaries Act, and the jurisdiction of the Marine Mammal Protection Act over oil and gas exploration using seismic air guns. And whereas the town of Fairfax recognizes that our community, our businesses and industries depend on a healthy coastal environment for the benefit of current and future residents, property owners and visitors. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the town council of the town of Fairfax opposes offshore oil and gas drilling, seismic oil and gas exploration and offshore fracking and other well stimulation, which unnecessarily risk our economic and ecological health and individually and cumulatively. And to be it further resolved that the town council of the town of Fairfax opposes any plan or legislation which encourages any oil and gas development, exploration or fracking and other well stimulation offshore that would impact the citizens of California. And to be it further resolved by the town council of the town of Fairfax that this resolution be submitted to the U.S. Department of the Interior Secretary David L. Bernhardt, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management Acting Director Walter Krugshank, California Governor Gavin Newsom. The foregoing resolution was duly passed and adopted, um, at a regular, uh, town council, uh, meeting of the town of Fairfax held in said town on the fourth day of November 2020, by the following, um, should it be approved. So thank you very much for hearing that out. I think this was a really vital, uh, step to take in showing our strong opposition to this offshore drilling. So, um, I would like to go out to the public for any comments on consent and then, uh, we'll move forward. Uh, Michelle, do we have any commenters?
Yes, right now we have just one. It's Mark Bell and you are unmuted.
Hi, I have a question about, um, number six. It says approve agreement with OLAS performance to provide facilitation services. So when it says amount not to exceed $40,000, is that $40,000 from the $100,000 that was taken away from the police? Or is that an additional $40,000? Uh, and is this the person who charges $420 an hour for their services? Is that something else? Because I don't even think my cardiologist makes $420 an hour clear. And, uh, as far as, and if it is that person, I'm kind of curious as to what the qualifications are that give you a job that pays you $420 an hour. I looked at college courses online. I didn't see anything like that. So I'd like some clarification on that issue.
Um, Stephanie, uh, if we could give a brief clarification without pulling this item, that would be great. Um, if it turns into a discussion, we may need to pull it and put it at the end of tonight's agenda.
Yeah. Well, there was a couple of misstatements in your comment, Mark, that I'd be happy to clarify. Um, but first, yes, the 40,000 is coming out of the 100,000. We did not defund the police. Chief Warren and Garrett offered the RESJ committee prior to it being officially formed. There was favorability in the police budget. And we've confirmed that numerous times. So I'd appreciate it if you did, uh, mischaracterize the committee as defunding the police. And if you would not do that in the future and put that narrative out into the community, um, and we, uh, Garrett was very successful and Lisa Jimenez, who is a local resident and highly qualified. And I'm sure if you were able to attend, um, our town council meeting where we discussed how thoroughly qualified she is to do this work and how Bruce and I were very impressed with her, um, skills and experience. So you probably missed that discussion. She is on the line with us. I don't know if she wants to talk about it. But Garrett did negotiate her rate down too. And that's in the, um, staff report related to that, which I don't have on me. But I think, what is the new rate? Garrett, is it three?
An hour.
Tell me.
$350.
It's down to 350. So I think I'll, I think that should suffice unless anybody wants to talk to Lisa. She's on the line.
Yeah, we, we can't do that on consent. Um, although Lisa, thank you for tuning in. We'll see what other comment we have and, um, and then move forward.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next speaker, please, on consent.
Uh, the next speaker is Deborah, uh, Deborah Benson. Sorry.
Hello, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. First of all, I do have an email from staff regarding the trees. I am not a liar. Staff was involved. Okay, going on to consent. I'm very glad that the, uh, town has taken the recommendation I put forward in 2017 to give Michael Vivret some new software. Um, however, I have a question about that. Check number 72526 to California Infrastructure for 60,18745 mentions projects 20, uh, 20022-01-02-07. Um, the old software, uh, put the memos as, um, Azalea Bridge or Cascade or, uh, Meadow Bridge or whatever bridge. So I'd like to see that apply to this new software. The $40,000 to the, uh, RESJ facilitator, uh, that leaves $60,000 left. So I asked about a budget and I was told that the whole $100,000 was to go towards a facilitator. So if the facilitator now is only $40,000, where does the $60,000 go? Maybe to the tree maintenance? That would be nice. Or back to the police, which, uh, was in the overtime budget and that they might need. Um, the other thing is the, uh, the permits for the temporary parklets. I would like to see the coffee roastery moved to Broadway. Put the bike rack on the parcade where parking usually happens. Because the loading zone at Bank Street is not being used. What's happening is that the delivery trucks are parking in a lane of fulliness.
Deborah, Deborah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I have 52 minutes left. Can we stop the clock?
This is not in consent. Um, so if you have something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll stop there. Six Walsh Lane, is that in consent?
No, the Six Walsh Lane is coming. It's our public hearing item.
I'll stop. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, so, um, we're bringing, bringing it back. Um, Michelle, that, that's, that's it? No other public speakers?
That's it if, if you want to close public comment, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I wanted to close public comment and bring it back to council. Um, and I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion Kohler and a second read. Uh, council member Hellman.
Hi.
Council member Reed.
Hi.
Council member Kohler.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
And myself, I vote aye. And so, um, thanks for the comments on consent and we're moving forward um, to the public hearing item of the evening. Um, this is number nine, um, in the packet.
Madam Mayor, um, I will need to recuse myself because the, uh, subject property is within 500 feet of where I live.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. We'll miss you and we'll see you back in, uh, in an unknown amount of time.
Right. Thank you. Right, thank you.
So I will begin, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission action approving a Hill Area Residential Development, Excavation, Design Review, and Tree Removal permits for the expansion and remodeling of the single-family home located at Six Walsh Lane. And we will begin with a staff report and then council, if you want to hear, I'm going to let you and the public know how this is going to run. It's a little different as it is an appeal and a public hearing, obviously. So we will hear from staff. We'll have a moment to ask questions of our staff, town staff. Kara is here with us tonight and then we will open the public hearing. We will hear from the appellant and the applicant at 10 minutes each. We will then go out to the public. After the public has spoken, we'll come back to council. Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of both the appellant and the applicant. The, so if I need to give an example on this one. So if Barbara asks a question of the appellant, the appellant will have two minutes to respond and the applicant will have a minute in order to respond or rebut the the comment of the other party. And that's how it will work. And then we will close that public hearing and come back to council for deliberation. So I just wanted to lay it out for everyone before we begin. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kara for a staff report. And thank you for all the work that the Planning Commission and all of the parties have put into this.
Okay, so the project proposes to remodel and expand an existing 1,510 square foot two-story home. The entire home would be remodeled, including replacing the existing wood shingles with tan and dark blue cement board panels. The existing substandard foundation would also be replaced. The expansion involves a two-story addition to the southwestern side of the home with a two-car garage on the lower floor and a primary bedroom on the upper floor. So a total of 406 square feet would be added to the second floor of the home. And then the other expansion to the home consists of converting 950 square feet of existing non-living space in the lower level into living space. The living space in the home would increase from 1,510 square feet to a total of 2,866 square feet. The height of the home would also increase so that the lower floor of the home could be raised. And since the home is on a sloped lot, the height of the home is going to vary based on the slope and it would be its highest at 31 feet 10 inches and that's where the two-story addition is proposed. The Planning Commission initially heard the project on August 20th, 2020, continued it to the September 17th, 2020 meeting. And at that meeting, the commission conditionally approved, as Renee said, the Hill Area Residential Development, Excavation, Design Review and Tree Removal permits for the expansion and remodeling. Then on September 28th, the appellant filed the timely appeal of the Planning Commission's approval and provided the following reasons for the basis of his appeal. The first was he felt excluded from participating in the last half of the Planning Commission meeting while proponents of the project were able to participate. The second reason was the Planning Commission, he said the Planning Commission focused on the compliance of quantitative aspects of the zoning code and ignored requirements for design review and Hill Area Residential Development. And his final reason for his appeal was that he said that items found in the architectural drawings were incorrect, requiring variances and none were sought. So just to briefly address those three things. For regarding the first item, after the public portion of the September 17th meeting was closed, the commissioners asked the applicant questions, which is why she spoke more. And staff, I was asked to read a letter from the absent property owner into the record, which I did since it was submitted late. Regarding his second reason, the Planning Commission reviewed the project and based on the plans and other documentary evidence in the record, determined that the applicant met the burden of proof required to support the findings necessary to approve all the requested permits. And then finally regarding his third point, the project does not require a variance because it complies with town code. Specifically, it meets the off-street parking requirements. It's not increasing an existing non-conformity and it's not going to create a new non-conformity. And the building is not located, the house isn't located in a ridgeline scenic corridor or a flood zone. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Kara. And actually, I really did not introduce you to the public and this is Kara Spencer and she is an assistant planner with the town. So council, we can now spend a few minutes asking any questions of Kara, of staff about what's been presented and anything in the staff report. Or anything at all.
Kara, I didn't quite hear, hi, by the way. I didn't quite hear a reason for why the appellants, if you will, were cut off from responding in that second half of the meeting. That's at that part of the meeting. I hear you responded to the first item number one in your staff report, but I didn't actually hear an answer as far as why they weren't able to participate.
They participated during the public portion of the meeting and then after that, like all Planning Commission meetings and Town Council meetings, when the public portion of the meeting is closed, they no longer can speak on items. So the public portion was closed. So that's why they didn't speak anymore during the last part of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Barbara, John, questions. John?
Sure. I mean, were there things, subjects that the appellant brought up that, you know, that had been brought up in the second half of the meeting after the public comment period was closed that were new new topics?
In, you mean, well, the, when he filed his appeal, he provided a letter and kind of expanded on the reason, the basis for his appeal. And that that was new information that wasn't brought up during the meeting.
Okay. So.
Yeah, so it wasn't, that was after the meeting, though.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's hard to speculate as to whether those questions came up in his mind.
Right.
Okay, John, did you have any others? Or Barbara, it looks like has a few?
The only thing, I, I don't know if this is the right time. I wanted to disclose that the applicant had reached out and offered a site tour, which I participated in on Monday. Because seeing the the house from the outside would not provide the kind of understanding. So I did participate in the house tour.
As did I.
And also wanted to say that I sat on the Planning Commission with both the applicant and the appellant for some time and worked with both of them quite collegially.
Okay, I.
I also went by the house, too.
Yes, I believe that all council members did go by the house. There was a crossing in passing and no council members had any discussion one with the other. So for full disclosure. I do have a question. I'm pondering whether I save that for the applicant, but I think it's important to be to be clear and let the public hear and Kara, maybe you could answer this for us. Is, it seemed to me that by the plan that only one corner of this house is proposed to be at a 31-foot height. It's a little confusing and I think looking at it from from the public's perspective, it may look as though the whole entire house is being lifted to 31 feet. Could you just kind of give us a quick picture of what that looks like? And how, what proportion of the house is that 31-foot height proposed to be?
So the portion of the house that's going to be the 31 feet is the part that that's the addition. So when you look at the house, it's that the front of the house faced, that's the east side of the house. And then as you're looking at it to the left, that's the south, the southern side. So it's in the back of the house on the left side as you're facing the house. That that's the portion that's going to go up the most. And it goes up the most because of the slope of the lot. Because at this part of the lot, there's less, and then as you, to make the roof line look normal, it gets bigger, it gets higher and back. So because of the slope, it gets higher at the rear of the house.
Okay, okay, great. And then because we can get more general picture from you, can you just talk for a moment just about the grading? I know that that's a point of contention because when you read the staff report, it sounds like a ton of excavable material that needs to come out in order to work to, you know, put this garage in. Can you talk about that in 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 context of what that actually means? Because sometimes in these staff reports, that says things to the, you know, to the 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 least, I wish I should actually not say something like that, but when we see things like as much as possible or to the least extent of what is needed or things like that, it's hard to picture what that means in a quantifiable way.
Right. And I'm going to talk about it a little bit, but I'm going to also maybe ask Ben Berto, the planning director, to maybe expand upon my explanation a little bit more because I think he probably might be, he's had a little bit more experience with this than me, but so the the amount of material that needs to be excavated. I'm not an engineer, so I, that's why I I don't feel totally comfortable talking about this, but it was the entire project, we had, you know, geotechnical reports. They were all reviewed by the consulting town engineer and for the excavation permit, he specifically looked at the amount of excavation that was going to occur. And he didn't raise any red flags to the amount of excavation that was occurring. And I think maybe Ben could maybe give a better idea of like how many truckloads or how much, what the amount actually would be.
It's 233 cubic yards, is that right?
Correct. But maybe Ben, if you want to help me out a little bit on that.
Yeah, we know that, is my audio okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We know that going that far up the hill that you're not going to be able to get a full-size tandem trailer up there, which would be able to off-haul 20 cubic yards. So you're limited to 10-yard dump trucks, basically. And so if you're if you're doing 270 yards, that's of off-haul, that's going to be 27 trips. When you're looking at the question of how deep into the slope do you go? Because that's one of the questions that arose was, well, could you lower the height of the structure? Basically, if you are dropping it further into the footprint of the building, for every, I just calculated for every foot that you dropped it, you would excavate about another 40 cubic yards, so four more truck trips. But, yeah.
Okay, so hence, just to understand, so hence, if you were to limit this, the height, you'd be digging down deeper?
Yes, that was one of the options that the applicant looked at was if we want, if if the determination were to reduce the height of the structure by digging it further into the foot, it further down, what impact would that have on the amount of off-haul? And so I just did a quick calculation on that. So if you were to drop it another foot, it would be 40 cubic yards or four 10-yard dump truck trips.
Okay, that's very helpful, I think.
Can I add something? I don't want to disagree with Ben, but I had done a calculation on the number of dump trucks. So typically, a dump truck can hold 10 to 14 cubic yards. And so my calculation shows 16 to 23 dump truck loads. Now, it's probably not going to be straight soil, so we'd be on the high end, more on the 23 dump truck loads. And so it's somewhere, it's a little, I'm disagreeing with Ben's assessment of 27 dump trucks, which maybe we can agree to disagree, but I did a calculation when I saw those numbers because I wanted to have an idea of how many trucks would be going up there. So that's what I came up with.
Okay, we'll just stay with that friendly disagreement. And that's all the questions of staff, council? Okay.
So the the flow of this is going to be, can you remind me the flow of how this is going to go? Because I do have a few more questions, but I'm just trying to figure out the best time when they should come in.
Right. And just so that everyone knows, and this is all done in order to have an equitable process in the use of time and the allocation of time. So at this point, if we've finished asking questions of staff, we will go to listen to the appellant for 10 minutes. We will then listen to the applicant or the appellee for 10 minutes. And then we will go out to the public. The public can then comment and then we will come back and we will have an opportunity to ask questions of the appellant and the appellee. And then will be a two-minute response and a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. Yeah, let's proceed.
All right, excellent. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to invite Mr. Morgan Hall to join us. I see your hand, Morgan. And and Morgan, are you speaking on behalf of the appellants?
That's a little, it's a matter of a little bit of confusion. Basically, I'm being called the appellant and I'm being referred to as he. I'm representing the neighbors, the neighborhood of Walsh Lane. It's a total of eight houses up here.
Okay, so you are representing the neighbors of Walsh Lane, the appellants?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So you have 10 minutes, Morgan, and we are all ears.
Well, thank you. Let's see, I just did want to make it clear that it's not just me that's registering this appeal. It's the whole neighborhood. And I just would like to say also, if later in the meeting, I'm happy to talk about and clarify any of the technical issues here. I've been in the construction business essentially for 49 years, so I've been around the block a few times. I just wanted to say that Walsh Lane is an unusual neighborhood. It's very diminutive. Walsh Lane is 10 feet wide. It's a block long. It's a dead end. And there are six houses on it. It's not, it's smaller than most Fairfax neighborhoods. And everybody up here is worried about the impact that the changes to Six Walsh Lane will have. The, there, the appeal that is written The there, the appeal that is written covers a lot of the issues that come up when considering design review and hillside residential development requirements. I'm not really going to dwell on those because it would take too long, but they're all essentially covered in the appeal. And we felt that many of these issues were not addressed by the planning commission. I do want to talk about a couple of things, though, that are very serious about this project. So so serious, in fact, that they really, they would require variances and variances were not sought. And they basically invalidate the project. One of the, one of the issues is the matter of deficient setbacks. The the six Walsh Lane is the RS six zoning district. It's on a lot that's over fifteen percent slope. Its setback requirements are, let's see, the essentially, the front and rear setbacks combined are supposed to add up to thirty-five feet. The two, those two at six Walsh Lane add up to twenty-nine feet. So it's six feet deficient of what's required. The side yard setbacks are to add up to twenty feet with a minimum of a five feet. One of the setbacks is four and a half feet, so that's deficient. Given those two deficiencies, the property, the building there is considered non-conforming. If a building is non-conforming, there are certain restrictions that are put on it. Certain things it can't, it can't do. One of them is they can't increase the size or area of whatever the non-conformity is. So in this case, both the front yard and the side yard are the non-conformities. Raising the house roof by two feet is increasing the size of that non-conformity. It's not, it's not, it's prevented by the code. Let's see, secondly, because of this non-conformity, the code also says that a bedroom cannot be added. The present project proposes adding two more bedrooms, two of five. So that, to me, essentially disqualifies the project. The second major problem with the proposal is the matter of the basement. If if the lower, lowest level of the six Walsh Lane can be called a basement by the definition, it does not, the floor area in that basement or that lower level does not have to be included in the floor area of the house. The definition of a basement was incorrectly interpreted by the architect. Essentially, the basement is two, two definitions. There's one that says all of the walls, all four walls have to be below grade. They all have to be, every part of, all of the walls has to be below grade, or another way to look at it is that none of the walls can be, none of the walls can be more than three feet above grade. If you look at the plans and in particular, the west elevation, those, that elevation shows that the windows there are from floor to ceiling. They're not below grade at all. So using the definition of basement is wrong. And deducting or not including the floor area there in the basement, the lowest level, you, you, you have to include that floor area there in the calculation overall of the floor area of the house. The part, the project architect claims that the, that basement is not developed and it's not to be counted. Well, that's, that's not true. It's, it's wired, it has some lighting in it, and also there's areas of it that have a full eight-foot ceiling by this California building code. If it has a seven-foot-six-inch ceiling height, it's legal and it has to be counted. So essentially, what you get if you don't say the lowest level square footage is zero, which says, which is written on the plans on sheet A1, the very first sheet, it lists the existing lower level square footage is zero. Reworking the calculations to reflect the, if we're, it's actually there. Instead of coming up to twenty-eight hundred and sixty-six square feet that's claimed, it's actually three thousand eighty-three. Given that floor area, weighing it against the lot area, you wind up with an FAR of point four three. Point four is the maximum allowed by the code. So at the very least, they would have to attempt to give us a variance for that FAR. And variances for FAR are rarely granted. So that's the second major problem with the plans. In both of those cases, and even repeated this evening, the town planner quoted a part of the code as justifying this matter of the setbacks. In order for the, the problem with the setbacks not to be a problem, there are three conditions, all of which have to be met. Let's see.
Morgan, you have one minute, so I just want to make sure you get everything you want to get in.
Well, essentially, it says that the anyway, she quotes a, a part of the code that's supposed, that says you can't do it because of this, and she actually says it can be done because of this. She, the, the basic complaint here is one I'd like to elaborate a little bit on. And that is that the town planner who handled this project is new and inexperienced and has shown a real lack of understanding of the code. Several times, many times, the project architect says that the, the square footage of the floor, the floor area throughout the house was verified by the town planner as to justify it. When it, when it indeed, it wasn't.
Morgan, I'm afraid your time is up. You will have a chance when we have a question, a question opportunity to respond to some more, to give us a little more information. So thank you very much. And I'm going to move right on to the, the applicant for for their ten minutes. And I'm assuming this is Laura. Laura, I've always said your name wrong, but Caroline, that's wrong, I'm sure. But Laura, I think that's you.
And if Laura, you could raise your hand, then I could unmute you. This is Michelle. Oh, I see you now. Okay.
Well, there she is.
Okay, so, all right. Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. And then I guess, Michelle, when I ask you, would you, you're going to show the slides I submitted?
Would you like me to start that with, when you start your presentation?
Well, I will give you the cue. I'm going to make a statement first, and then I'll let you know when I'm ready for those slides. I'd like to thank the opportunity to thank the Fairfax Planning Department for their excellent staff report and support of this project. I'd also like to thank the council members who came to visit the property. I previously sent a response addressing all the appellant's claims to the town council to consider. The property trustee, Merza Chu, the project team members, and I respectfully asked that you deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission decision. The, the appellant has tried various tactics to raise objections to the project. First, he tried using the complying sewer lateral at Six Walsh Lane as the reason to deny the project with the town planning staff and with the planning commission. When that claim was proven false, he then tried to challenge the technical aspects of the project. Town staff has outlined how his claims are false. I have rebuffed all of his claims in my letter to the council. All the appellant's tactics have been ways to delay the approval of the project and the submission of building permits. Since the beginning of the project, it has been the intention of the homeowner to remodel the home to suit her family's needs. Currently, the home is structurally unsound and is an intimate fire danger, fire hazard. As an architect and resident of Fairfax for the last twenty-eight years, I've been designing homes that fit and blend into the community and intimately familiar with the town building and zoning codes. The house has been developed with those codes in mind. Specifically, this resulted in a design that fits within the lot, meets height requirements and all of the town's legal requirements. As the project architect, I strive to create balance by meeting the needs of the homeowner and the requirements of the town code with respect to floor area setbacks, height, excavation, fire requirements without the need for variance. Hence, the planning commissioner's approval of the project. The appellant cites the following reasons for the appeal: denial of participation. The applicants were given priority in public meeting process to present their project and answer questions from planning commission. The neighbors presented materials in advance to the town staff that were included in the planning commission staff report. And they were given an opportunity to speak during the public hearing time. No impropriety occurred during the planning commission meeting of September seventeen and as is alleged in the neighbor's appeal. Reason two, planning commissioner ignored the design reviewed and hill area development requirements. Michelle, you can start the slides now.
Okay.
Okay, this is just, we can go on to the next one. Number, slide two. Okay, so the slide on the left shows the setbacks in yellow. And you'll see on the left side, there is an area of the existing home that does encroach in the setbacks, but the additions are all shown in the hatched areas on the left side. And that we're all within setbacks. So there's not, there's nothing that's, that's, that's not within the required setbacks. This slide also shows the, the proposed parking for the project. Currently, the, the parking is almost non-existent with only one dirt car parking space. So we will be providing parking and getting cars off the street. The four parking spaces that are proposed are all part of the application and will provide covered parking, which is a town requirement. The driveway has been designed by civil engineer who is verified. The vehicle maneuvering standards are met, and the project has been designed and minimized gradings as much as possible. The proposed excavation is one hundred and seven cubic yards for the driveway, fifty-six cubic yards for the garage, and seventy for the new foundation. Okay, so the next, the next slide shows that the landscaping that we have proposed between ourselves and the appellant's property. The next slide, the air, number four, shows the existing aerial photo and the relation of number six with the other homes in the neighborhood. Okay, this is the, this is the slide that I really like to, to no, this is, this is, oh, oh, go back to number five, but that's one here. Okay, so this shows the existing site conditions where there's the lack of parking and where the new driveway is proposed and where the new addition is proposed in relationship to its source pools. Okay, the next slide shows the view from the, where would be the new proposed master bedroom into ten Walsh Lane to illustrate there's no lack of privacy. But number six, Walsh Lane has a mountain view, which they're trying to capture with design of the roof line. And the other slide shows the, the view from the existing deck, which would be a similar view for the proposed deck and how there's no, we can't see, there, there's only trees that we see from yeah. Oh, and the garage windows are illustrated on the left side of the slide. That those are the only windows there that are on that side of Walsh Lane, and then they're in the garage. Okay, so the next, next slide, this shows what's proposed for the, for the fourth floor plan and the lower floor, but let's go down to the, the next one with the number, slide number nine. Okay, so this is, this is a photo of the existing garage, of the existing basement. And the statements by the appellant regarding the basement are false. Currently, the entire lower floor is unimproved and has no floor area that's counted towards floor area ratio. Town staff has verified that the floor areas are listed on plans are correct. Yes, keep that one, and does not exceed the floor area ratio. The next slide, number ten, shows the existing failing foundation and the deficiencies that must be corrected before the homeowner can move in. The foundation is cracking and crumbling right now. Okay, number eleven, we can come back to if we have time. And number twelve shows the water intrusion that happens during a rainstorm through the cracks in the foundation when it rains. Number four, number thirteen shows the existing faulty wiring the hazardous ZENSco electrical panel and the other hazardous wiring that is present in the home. Number fourteen shows this is where the highest point of the structure will be at that one corner. And it's because that's also where the lowest point on the property within building footprint occurs. And the so the, the height of the structure is misleading as there's only one corner of the building that approaches the height limit due to the existing grade of the property. This is, this is a photo of the, of the property at the lowest grade and creates the highest point. Okay, so the next slide shows what's the proposed height. And so from the front, we have twenty-six foot five, but also the driveway slope. So really, you're only going to see the front, the, the, the second floor addition from Walsh Lane.
Laura, I'm sorry to interrupt. Now, could you keep an eye on the clock because I don't have access to it? I just want to make sure that we're on target. And Laura is, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And this slide then shows where we, the, the left side shows that's where the highest point is. I'd also like to point out that I'd also like to point out that where the ridge is only three foot six higher than what the existing ridge of the property is. Okay, and so if we can come down to the, down to slide number 19, I think it was the appellant wrote in their report that we had an unusual roof shape, and I just wanted to show that I found three that were like within a block of the proposed property. 21 Walsh Lane, which is on, which is on the same street. 126 Frestock, which is at the corner of Frestock and Manzanita, and so is 130 Frestock, have since the same type of similar roof shapes. Number 20 is the, an example of the type of siding that's proposed on part of the house in the same color. That's kind of gray blue slate color. And it's fire retardant, and it meets the requirements for the wooie.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, the clock is at zero now.
Okay, all right.
Laura, I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
Okay, I think I got my points in that I wanted to, so thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for the presentation. And at this point, we are going to go out to the public. We will hear your questions and comments. We are not going to go back and forth with the appellant and applicant to answer public questions, but we are hearing them, and we will take them forward should that be appropriate. So, Michelle, could you call on the first speaker, please?
Yes, the first speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Larry Bragman, followed by Christoph Bessler. So, Deborah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. At the beginning of this meeting, Mayor Goddard, you spoke to the sacred nature of the land and gave thanks for our presence on it. This project is talking about hauling almost 300 cubic yards of Fairfax away. So, to me, this seems like giving up Fairfax, cubic yard by cubic yard. It doesn't fit with the homes in the neighborhood. It's way overdone in terms of, in terms of footprint, in terms of climate change, you know, energy consumption, in terms of numbers of bedrooms, bathrooms, parking requirements. And I think we have to be really careful about going down this road. We had a committee that decided on design review. And now that's folded into the planning commission. But design review has to do with more than the siding, the color of the siding on a building. It has to do, in the ordinance, with how a structure fits into a neighborhood. And we can chip away and haul away so much of Fairfax to the point that we're no longer Fairfax by approving these much bigger houses in small neighborhoods. So I would, you know, I would ask you to listen to the appellant and deny this building and ask them for some sort of a compromise. And I guess that's all I have to say, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by Christoph Bessler, followed by Rick Hamer. Larry, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, hi, Larry.
Hi. So this property is what's called a pre-existing non-conforming property. And just to establish that point, I want you can take a look at Exhibit C to your packet, which is the staff report for the planning commission. And if you go to page four of that, you'll see that on the setbacks, okay, required setbacks for a home in a high, you know, a sloped lot in the Hillside Residential District, it requires 35 feet combined front and rear setbacks. And this home, this lot, falls six feet short of that. It's only got 29 feet of existing front and rear setbacks. And if you look at the side yard setbacks, the minimum required is five feet. Well, one of the setbacks in this case is four foot six inches. So this is a non-conforming lot, and that's apparent by the face of the staff report. So that's a very important thing for you to understand because under the Fairfax Town Code, 17.016.010, a structure, a non-conforming structure cannot be expanded without a variance, okay? And this, in this project, essentially doubles the square footage of this property, and they didn't get a variance. And that is required here, and you can't get around that. And the variance process is a specific type of procedure under the Fairfax Town Code, and that wasn't done here. And as a matter of fact, there was no application for a variance that was even submitted to the planning commission as required. And if you go to the town code again, there's a whole variance procedure, which is laid out under 17.02, oh, excuse me, 17.028.010 at SEC. And it's got specific findings that need to be made for an exemption to get a variance. That wasn't done in this case. So my bottom line here is that this project was procedurally and substantively out of line and actually violated the town code, and it needs to be sent back to the planning commission to get a variance. So I don't really know if that's been made clear to you by the appeal or by your own planner, but it's very apparent to me, under looking at the, at the staff report, right on the face of the staff report, it's indicative that the setbacks, in this case, are non-conforming. And when you have a non-conforming property, and that includes setbacks, you've got to get a variance, and that wasn't done in this case. And this appeal must be granted, or you're going to need to change the town code. But you can't do both. You can't approve something and ignore the town code. And that was done, in this case, by the failure of the staff report to note that this was, is a non-conforming lot, and it is an expansion of a non-conforming use. And that does require a variance, and it requires going through the variance process, which was not done in this case, so.
Okay, Larry is already way over the time, so.
That's all I wanted to say. It's very clear to me, and it's right on the face of the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Christoph Bessler, followed by Rick Hamer, followed by Anne Fry. Christoph, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. Thanks for listening. And actually, thanks for coming by and looking at the house. I really appreciate it because I think you take an interest in it, and that's really important to all of us here. So I appreciate that. I also want to congratulate the council members to their success, and I want to also thank John Reed for being on the council. I appreciate it very much, too. I listened when the council members were talking about, when they were running for office to you guys, and listened to what you had to say, and then we made all of our decision. And all of our feeling here on Walsh Lane is that we don't get listened to. And that's a big, big problem for us, that we feel like the process doesn't really work. And that's something that is bothering us a lot. I cannot speak as smartly as some of these speakers did with all the numbers and stuff. So I'm really talking more as an amateur here. But I want to tell you two of the things, two stories that happened to me when I came to Fairfax. And the one was 20 years ago when I came to Fairfax, and I felt that special feel about it, and I talked to people about it. And many people told me, you know, Christoph, in this 1970s or 80s, or whenever it was, they planned to build a four-lane highway through the valley and through Fairfax. And we stood up to it, and we said, no, because you want to preserve the character of the valley and the character of the town. And I remember that, and I'm like, yes, thank God you guys did that, because now we have still a wonderful town. And this, in, as my job, I also went to Tiburon, and I went into the hills of Tiburon, and I was struck by the fact that the house values are through the roof, which is wonderful for everybody who owns a house there. But I felt like the feeling I got there with the big fences and with nobody on the street and nobody out there creating a neighborhood, I felt that discrepancy so much. And that's why I'm really happy to be in Fairfax, and I'm really happy to be on Walsh Lane because Walsh Lane is really a beautiful little neighborhood where people help each other and support each other. And when we talk about when this project came up, to me, the big deal was the design review, and it's supposed to fit in the neighborhood. And this house with the numbers that I not really understand, but when I look at the numbers and see what it does to our neighborhood, I feel it really does not fit in, and it will not do well with our neighborhood. And I hope you guys give us answers tonight because we didn't get that from the planning commission to how that would fit in our neighborhood, where we all agree, 100% of us have a bad feeling about it, and we feel that does not work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christoph. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rick Hamer, followed by Anne Fry, followed by Pam Mix. You're unmuted.
Hi now, this is Lake, I'm butting into Rick's turn to just jump in to say something. Fairfax is a real community gifted with the wonder of nature, ocean and mountain, and the convenience of towns like in the city. So who would want to, who would not want to enhance their living and improve the place they live? But what, whose cost, what cost they're going to do? Reminding, construction can be destruction to communities already exist. And they were having their own life, and somebody might possibly knew they inherited the place to come in to dig the ground, to bring out hundreds of acres of, you know, cubic yard of soil and to make noise to disrupt their daily life. Do they have a right to do that? And I kind of think that before we go into the codes and enforcement and the structure engineering, we should talk to ourselves ethically, is this really okay? We should ask the neighbors first. This is what I feel. And instead of giving the variance and the code enforcement first, why don't we listen to what they have to say about their neighborhood first? This is our town, and you guys have a power not to make this kind of change by outsider to happen. Thank you.
Can we reset the clock? Can I speak then, please, Michelle?
Yes.
Hi there, this is Rick Hammer. So I attended the planning commission meeting for this on Zoom, and I note that the findings here were actually what I used for a public comment about a month or so ago about how the planning commission was struggling for findings in order to try to figure out how to appropriately size this dwelling for the neighborhood. And I made a public comment about its carbon footprint a month or so ago, and this was the actual property I was talking about. So I, first, I fully concur with what Mr. Bragman is talking about here because I'm no stranger to buying properties, and I know that when a speculative property is bought by someone out of town, it becomes a square peg in a round hole, and this is no exception. It was bought by, through a trust, and back in 2019. And then the trust trustee took over the property after the parent died, and now they're building their dream. But this is, this lot was not really a good fit for a five-bedroom house, and none of the improvements are necessary for what the architect had shown as their slides. I mean, there are a lot of deficiencies. There's electrical, there's foundations cracked. But you could do that and still make a very valuable 2,000, 1,500 square foot home in the neighborhood with 1,500 square foot homes in it. The basement, the daylighting basement, did not have to be expanded to fix these foundations and do a financially viable project. So I just, I don't know if the owner needs a five-bedroom house, but I think the impact on that neighborhood is a little bit too much, and maybe that should be looked at and brought back for a variance so that we can go back and, as a town, see if we can make something fit our community a little bit better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Anne Fry, followed by Pamela Mix, and you're unmuted.
Hi there. Sorry about that. My name is Anne Fry, and I am the owner of 70 Manzanita Road, which is to the north of the project, the Walsh Lane. And I am opposed because the two-foot increase to the repline is going to completely block my southern ridgeline view. The scenic ridgeline corridor, I'm not familiar with this term, but it is going to completely block my view. Also, the amount of light that I'm going to be getting in the wintertime is going to be impacted by the higher roof line. I'm a nurse who often works night shift, and this is going to severely affect me. And most importantly, I'm speaking for myself and even for those single homeowners who stand behind me. 11 years ago is my dream to build, or excuse me, to buy a home in Fairfax. And I was lucky enough to do that. I was able to purchase this lovely charming two-bedroom, two-bath home on Walsh Lane. And that house is perfect. And if it, the homes on Walsh Lane do not involve a five-bedroom, four-bath house, thank you for your time, all of you, and your effort.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Next speaker, please. Okay, thank you, Anne. Um, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Pamela Mix, followed by Frank Egger. You're unmuted, Pam.
Hello, everybody. I was on the planning commission for nine years and two years as the planning commissioner chair. So I've been around the block a little bit. I really appreciate Larry's critique. I thought it was excellent and also Morgan, and I know Morgan well from being on the plane commission. I'm, I'm pretty disturbed if these facts are true, which I'm sounding like they are, if you have a setback issue and, and you also have a FAR issue, a point four three, then you're not following the code and the code is the code and it's very specific. And, and we worked endless, endlessly on helping to create those policies. So I, I would really hopefully, um, hope that you will look at these ideas that Morgan and Larry brought forward. My other issue is thinking about the bigger, broader picture. You know, we need, you know, most people, when you ask them, well, why did you move to Fairfax? Why did you want to come here? What, what, what brought you here? They will talk about the trees, the quaintness, the village feeling, the, the small town feeling, the, the character. And 10 years I worked on the general plan and that's what we worked on. We worked on the character. So from my, my point of view and looking at this, it's, it's out of character. It will change that neighborhood forever. It's way too big. It, it, it's, it's just, you know, I think those are the questions that, you know, why did we do a general plan based on character? Why did we, why did we move here? Did we want to have big, large houses and have them so close to us? If you want that San Salmo is awesome for that. But that's not why I moved here. And I would think most people that do come here don't want that. And then last about the design review board, I was there when we had one. And right after I left, it was disbanded because there were some issues around scheduling it. So it really was well functioning, you know, specific, they, they knew what they were doing. I would never feel comfortable working on design. So I don't know, that might be a consideration for the future. So yeah, and then, you know, the footprint, once you build on that land and the, from what I am here, the trees, the, the removal of the trees is just going to desecrate the land there. You're going to change it forever. Once you cover that wonderful soil with cement, that is, that is what you'll have. You'll have cement forever. So I would send it back and review all these specs and everything. It's not clean. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Pam. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Frank Egger, followed by Juan Carlos, followed by Karen. So Frank.
Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger, middleweight. I've, I question whether or not the applicant's architect, Laura Krillin, had a potential conflict of interest as an insider from the very beginning. As a planning commissioner, she put this project together for her firm Frederick C. Divine Associates. She resigned from the planning commission sometime after her June 18th planning commission meeting, after the applications for approval had been submitted. At no time during the hearings did she announce that while a planning commissioner, she was facilitating this application. Fairfax's Town Code, Chapter 12.16, Private Road Ordinance, requires a 20 foot wide road. This application is in violation of 12.16.030 Establishment Procedure. The purpose and intent of the original private road ordinance approved in 1978 was to not allow new structures in print. Six Walsh Lane is considered a new structure. Would not allow new structures on narrow private roads without adequate access for public safety, like fire engines and medic ambulances. A pickup truck barely fits on the eight foot, eight foot wide gravel dirt road. Walsh Lane is a gravel dirt road and Fairfax cannot approve a new residence on a gravel dirt road if, period. If approved, this will put a 20 ton fire engine, will put ton, 20 ton fire engines on a gravel dirt road to fight a fire in the winter during, during a storm. I mean, it doesn't make sense. Before, before you act, please ask our fire department to bring up a type one engine and drive it down Walsh Lane. To so you can see, so everyone can see whether or not a fire engine can even fit on Walsh Lane. Now, the wildland urban interface zone issues are not addressed. The application more than doubles the current project size with the proposed five bedrooms and four baths. And, and garage. The fire service did not address how they would fight a fire at six Walsh Lane. A type one engine cannot, cannot fit the eight foot wide road down Walsh Lane. Fairfax cannot approve a major development in the Cascade Canyon Wui Zone without meeting all requirements of the Wui Fire Protection Issue. So that's code section 8.06.010, adoption of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. Evacuation and time, town liability is not addressed. Should a fire break out at six Walsh Lane, the residents and the homes on Walsh Lane below number six will not be able to evacuate and may perish. Fairfax can no longer claim implied immunity from liability when they approved in effect a new structure with significant fire safety and evacuation issues they were aware of, but ignored. Fairfax codes also allow accessory dwelling unit to be built, to be added to this property. So, so down road and the, the new owner, whoever that's going to be, could add another unit up there. The, the, the seven member, member of the seven member planning commission vote was, was a three to one vote, a minority of the planning commission, three members voted yes. I, I urge you, approve the appeal without prejudice. Let these speculators bring back a structure that meets current town codes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Um, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Karen, followed by Barbara. Karen, you're unmuted.
Whoops. Hi, thank you. My name is Karen Sukamp and I, the first thing I wanted to say is I was so surprised by the number of people who have gotten involved in this issue and I really want to thank everybody. And I guess my question to the applicant is how many people have actually demonstrated support for the project when they don't have a financial interest in it? So for me, I was shocked at the size of it. I wanted to cry when I thought of the months and months of drilling, digging and the endless amounts of trucks here every day. But what more surprised me was the number of people who came forward and said to us, how can we help? And then contributed money to help fight this eyesore. Not one person who came forward mentioned how much more money they could make if they sold their home because of neighborhood improvement. And why? Because that is not what we believe will improve the neighborhood, never mind the lane. It's, it's really time to look at how much you want the concept of development to go. Because people like myself, who worked in the public school system, donated hours and hours of time as a volunteer. We worked in a neighborhood and we lived in a neighborhood and we participated in a neighborhood that we could afford. And our kid got to go to a really good school system. And why? Because we could afford to move in 20 years ago. But every time we develop these neighborhoods, we have to think about who's left to grow up into them. So I want to say thank you very much. I appreciate the interest and I'm, I'm grateful that we had a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Um, we have any other speakers, Michelle?
I believe that was Karen and we have Barbara left.
Sorry about that. Okay. You Karen.
Barbara, you're the last speaker.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, yes, um, I am, I have lived on Walsh Lane, my husband and I, for 36 plus years. We moved here when we had one young son and raised both of our children here. And, um, you know, we moved here because, well, first of all, the character and the charm of Fairfax and, and it's beautiful and the affordability of it. And I have to say that our two sons do not live in Marin. They couldn't afford to buy the tiny little house that we live in, that they grew up in. And I'm sure that there are many other families that have the same circumstances. I'd also like to just say that, you know, in these 36 plus years that we've lived here, there have been many remodels. There's been new construction in the neighborhood and to my knowledge, none of those projects raised the concern from so many people that this project has, has brought up. And to me, that really says something and I think it's, sounds some alarms for Fairfax that we need to pay attention to this. And I just think that we really need to take a very close and careful look at this and I, I appreciate your time and consideration of this and I guess just thank you for hearing us, because we have really felt like we have not been heard through all of this. And so I appreciate that and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
There is another speaker, Madam Mayor. That is Juan Carlos Chavoya Gama. You're unmuted now.
Yes. Yes, good evening. My name is Yabertu. This is Carlos and I'm here. So we have been living here. I bought this house 25 years ago and I liked it. I love Fairfax. And I love the quaintness and it was, uh, then it's just so beautiful to me and I can see the little roofs from up here. And they're all the trees and it's, it's so charming. And now somebody wants to come and build this monster of five bedrooms in this charming little neighborhood with concrete and steel and bright blue colors. And it just doesn't work. It's, it's just out of the whole development and it's totally out of the character of the whole neighborhood. And it's not Fairfax. I don't know where the people are coming from, but this house that they're building doesn't belong in Fairfax and they should know that they are not, that they are doing great harm to the whole neighborhood. We have been living here for so many years and we love it here. We love it the way it is. We have been paying taxes all those years for something that we really love. But there is something that I really want to, to point out. The most important thing for me is the parking of the street for five bedrooms. Don't tell me that is for one person or two people. It is going to be a lot of people living there. But two are two, we, we have, and, and fire trucks have to go by. And, and, and we cannot afford to have more cars parking on the streets because there are already so many cars parked. So thank you so much for listening. And here is Carlos. Please listen to him, but he has to say, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Could we reset, reset the clock, Garrett?
Yes.
Sure, everyone has that. Okay.
Thank you so much. Very kind.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good, good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Well, I, we moved here, I'm an architect from Mexico. But I moved here, I love it, this beautiful community of Fairfax. And as an architect, there's a lot of points here. We start the authorizing where I live in Mexico, the commission that was different. The authorities decide. They authorize buildings which have no character with the context around, which doesn't match these new things, which have nothing to do with the charming of the gold constructions where everybody lives. And that damaged permanently the neighborhood. Urbanistically, when you see something, the image, the urban image of a place tell you lots of the community which lives there. When you change something, that community, believe it or not, changes too. Psychologically affects everybody. That's a point of an architectural view. The other thing is when they excavate that, they will be damaged, the stability of the ground, of the, of the land, of course. And they say they're going to do 233 cubic yards, which you have to add at least 25% increase because the volume, when the material you take it off, increase, of course. That's a natural thing. And then we landed with 291 or 300 cubic yards excavation. The project, where I saw the images, I didn't knew the project before. The turn to get into the parking area, the, the architect proposed, is 90 degrees. It's almost impossible to get the car in there because the, the line, the, the street and west line is too narrow. And it's not, it's impossible, almost to get in 90 degrees into the, a parking area. And the structure, if, if they say the structure is bad, they have to prove it with, with a laboratory specially specializing structures to see how much damage is in there really. If it's that true, what the structure is damaged. What they show in the electricity panel, that is normal in our houses. They just have to cover it with the the original cover and that's it. There's not a fire hazard at all if they take care of that. They're showing things which I, I think, I, I, I'm like an architect, I don't know how they work here, but I will tell the, my client, be careful, you cannot do this. It will damage a lot of things. Better, why, why we don't improve the house, you won't make money and we improve it nicely and sell it. Is that what they want to do? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, have a good evening. Um, are there other speakers, Michelle?
I do not see any other speakers. No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so moving forward, we will ask, I will ask council members if you have a question of either the appellant or the applicant. And then Michelle, if you will help me out, we're going to have the opportunity for that applicant or appellant to answer for two minutes and then the other party for one minute. So we're going to have to do some clock, clock dancing. So council members, do you have any questions for either Laura or Morgan at this time? John?
Sure. I, I guess the first question that I would have is, is why? And I guess this would be for Laura, is, is, is why was a a variance not sought, given the, the front and rear setback issue?
If I may.
Just one minute, John. Yes, Janet?
I don't need to interrupt you, John, but I can address that issue if you'd like. It's a code. I don't need to interrupt you, John, but I can address that issue if you'd like. It's a code, uh, reading of the code, it's a code interpretation. We don't think there's any variance required.
Uh, can we?
I can further address that if you'd like, but you tell me when the appropriate time would be.
Um, well, I think it would be a good time, because I think there'll be others with questions that way. And then Laura will start with questionnaires directly to applicant and appellant after this. But Janet, could you go ahead and give us whatever information you can about the variance?
Sure, sure. I spoke with the planning staff pretty extensively about this issue when we saw the, the appellant's letter. And if you look at section seventeen point zero one six point zero four zero, alterations and additions to non-conforming structures. There's no question but that this house is already legal non-conforming. We, we get that. It's, it would be combined. And Kara, if you want to, you can, you can jump in and, and correct my, um, figures or anything I say that's a little bit off. But my understanding is it, it is with the combined side and, side and rear yard. There are two yards that, that have non-conforming setbacks to them. And so, when we look at this section, you, you go down and, and it talks about how, and no non-conforming structure can be moved or altered, et cetera. But the important part is, if you look at section C, and it says, the restriction in this division shall not apply. And then it talks about, you know, limited replacing of windows and doors, et cetera. Then it says, or, number two, when all of the following conditions exist. The off-street parking requirements of Title seventeen are met, or a variance for an exception has been granted. My understanding is there's no issue with the parking requirements. B, the work does not increase an existing or create any new non-conformity. And it says, and C, the structure of building.
Janet, can you go back to that last, that last statement?
Yeah, yeah, B, the work does not increase an existing or create any new non-conformity. And then it says, C, the structure building is not located in an area that's subject to the provisions of Richland Development or Flood Zones. And I think Kara spoke to this. C is, it's also met, is my understanding. B is where I focus my code interpretation. And that one line, the work does not increase an existing or create any new non-conformity. We believe that is true. We believe that the side yards are not being increased in their non-conformity. And that's the only non-conformity. The height is being increased, but that's not an existing non-conformity. And in fact, it's still under the height limit. So, we believe the restrictions in this division shall not apply. The restrictions about alterations to non-conforming structures. So, that's how the staff report is written. I know this is a little bit confusing, and you might want to look at this some more and think about it, because we certainly did. But I'm happy to write it up. If you would like to, perhaps even can, you know, finish out with the questions that you have and continue the matter to the next meeting, we can, you can get some written, more written information from staff, from me. If there's issues about fire, fire's already reviewed this as far as I know, but certainly we could get more information for you if that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you very much. It's super helpful. So, council members have with questions either for Laura or Morgan, please?
Can I, can I just add something? So, I sat on the planning commission for a while. And for legal non-conforming, as long as they don't go beyond what was legal non-conforming, I mean, that's like simple terms. They're okay. And if you look at the staff report for the August third, it talks about the front rear setbacks, the combined setbacks. They're not going beyond where their legal non-conforming was. So, I think it would be a good idea, after we ask whatever questions we have, to have Janet write it up and potentially continue this to the mid-November meeting. So, we have those answers for folks who are not as familiar with some of these. I don't think it's nuances. I just think, you know, there's stuff in the code that if you haven't worked with it, it's very complicated. So, that's just my two cents. But anyway, I didn't want to interrupt, but I just wanted to add from my experience.
Okay, thank you. So, we still, we have this opportunity with Laura and Morgan here. So, council members go for it, because even if we continue it, we're not gonna have this opportunity again in this format. Stephanie?
I have questions for both parties. The, my first question is, was there an effort in earnest to try to meet as a community and have a neighborhood meeting and try to work this out amongst yourselves?
Is, is that a question first for Morgan or Laura?
I, I don't have a preference.
Just choose, because one gets the one minute. We can ask both, that's fine. Maybe each of you take two minutes to, to, if you need it, in order to answer that. So, Laura, would you like to address that?
Laura, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes, okay, I see. I saw that come up. So, um, yes, the, the trustee and her project manager had welcomed the neighbors into her home to review the plans, discuss the layouts, and, and try to gather support and, and comments for the project. She and her project manager never heard any opposition until.
How did she reach out? Did she send, did she send an email? Or how did she reach out to everybody?
No, she invited, and she invited the neighbors into her home. We had the plans on the wall. David, her project managers here, would you like to add specifically say what you did?
Since, since taking delivery of the property over a year ago now, we've had a really open book with the, with the neighborhood. We've invited the neighbors in to review plans if they chose to come. Some did, some did not. In addition to that, we, my client is a very humble and gracious person, and she is excited about living in her new neighborhood. And she sent gifts for holidays, wine, cookies. So, she's made every attempt to be a good neighbor. When I was up there doing seasonal tree trimming, Morgan Hall and his wife asked me if I would help them with, with some of their trees. And we, we helped them and we cleaned up their yard. And we took that all out at our cost. So, we've had, during this entire process, a very open door policy as to, the fact that Maritza, who's a homeowner, she can't move in because it's not livable in its current condition. And right up until these meetings, we didn't hear the opposition that we were hearing today. And it started out with opposition around the sewer lateral, which was confirmed by an individual, individual from the city and Ross Valley Sanitary District. They went up, they had a meeting with Morgan Hall. Morgan, at some point during that meeting, I wasn't a party to that meeting, but confessed to have, having dug up the sewer lateral himself. And so, we've been, and then when that didn't stick, there was more of a ground swell movement to try to come up with other objections to the project, which we've been trying to respond to, but it's been a bit of a moving target.
Okay, David and Laura, thank you very much. That was the two minutes and a tiny bit over. But let's go ahead and ask Morgan as the representative to address Councilmember Hellman's question about, did the neighborhood meet? What were the efforts made? What was the interaction like, if I may paraphrase?
Morgan here, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay. Well, there's a bit of a history behind the Six Walsh situation. And the initial problem was with the sewer. And the previous owner had put a sewer in completely without any approvals. No easement, no permits, no nothing. And we approached the people there about doing something about it. We were ignored. The present owner did have the sewer sleeve without asking us any permission. And the sewer line that's leaving broke the ground, which is against California Plumbing Code. We had offered to help pay for, uh, rooting the sewer out the front of the house. It's, the problem being that the sewer goes, as it exists, goes across our backyard. And we didn't know about it, not even the title company did. So, it's completely unknown. Our offer to, am I still there? Our offer to help out with running a sewer line out the front of the house was ignored. Beyond that, in terms of the neighbor, she did open the house up and have plans showing. And I'm not gonna deny that. She brought cookies to everybody. One unfortunate thing happened, though. There were a couple of individuals that one of the neighbors talked to, who were some kind of financial investors, who were saying that there was intended to get two point five million dollars for that house. So, all that, we felt like we've been used, taken for a bunch of rubes and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Morgan. That, that two minutes is up. But thank you for that information. I, Stephanie, did you have other questions for either?
I have a question for Laura. So, when she gave me the tour yesterday, we were talking about the matters of privacy. And she was showing me the window view of Mount Tam and sort of explaining that. But the privacy that issue, issue that is described, or one of them anyway, is described on, in the appeal is related to the deck. And we didn't cover that, Laura. And so, I'd like to understand, I guess, what I would qualify as a discrepancy. Because this says, if you look on page sixteen, I think of the appeal and the further observation section. Can you just talk me through, because we didn't cover the deck too much. I mean, you pointed out to me. But the, the extension of the deck and it being closer to that property and that creating a privacy issue for Ten Walsh? Are you on mute?
Okay, I think I'm good now. Okay, yes, I don't know if you remember that, but we went to the other window that's at the back of the house and that one bedroom that faces number ten Walsh Lane. And we looked and that, the screen was open. So, you're able to stick your head out the window and then look at the view. And you saw that there was all, and I also have provided the photo in, in the, in the PowerPoint presenter, presentation that showed that, that was just, it was just a, a tree, a tree, tree view. I don't think we were able to show you. We walked on the other, the other council members, we, out in the yard to show also that you can't see, there's no, you can't see into any of the windows of Ten Walsh Lane at any point from, except for those ones other at the garage from, from Six Walsh Lane. When you look out the back window and you stuck your head out the window and looked, you saw all the, there was only a tree, there's only a tree, tree views. And there's, because, because there's existing oak trees between the two.
What about the deck, though? I'm asking about the deck.
Yes, that, that's the view from the deck, even as far as.
But the deck isn't, uh, the deck is below, what, what, with the window that you're talking about is on the.
Yeah, the deck is at that floor. The deck is at that, is at the upper floor. So, I don't know if that, um, describe it better. But we do have the photo, if we want to refer back to that, because we, we did take a photo from that view also.
It's a solid wall.
There's nothing, there's nothing, there's only view of vegetation. There's only trees, the oak trees and other trees between the two yards.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to, Morgan, I'd like to give Morgan a minute just to comment back on that, terms of the view and the privacy issue.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's a specious argument. Basically, all the years I've been involved with, with certainly architecture, the existence of vegetation is often not even a factor in considering many things. If a, if a planning department is considering something, they've got to consider it in the light of no vegetation. It could be planning, it could be construction, wind load, you name it. Now, this particular situation. The.
Can everyone else unmute, please? Laura and David, you may not be muted. I'm not sure. Go ahead, Morgan, sorry.
The, the deck, new deck off the back of the master bedroom at Six Walsh is misrepresented on the plans. And it does actually stick out beyond the vegetation that's there. A angled view is offered of the master bedroom and bathroom. I will, I will say that. The view of our deck off the back of our house is, is very apparent. There are trees there, but as I say, they'll always be there. So, essentially, that deck was designed without any sensitivity to our privacy. That deck is, like I said, farther towards the rear of the property. It's twenty-something feet closer to our property. And the surface of the deck at will Six Walsh Lane, I believe, is about twelve feet higher than the surface of our deck. So.
Okay, Morgan, thank, thank you so much. I'm really, I don't mean to be rude. I'm trying hard to keep everyone up. Okay, thank you. So, other questions for either Laura or Morgan? Barbara, John?
I don't have any specific questions. I've read through all the materials and visited the house. So, I, I would like to say, though, I, I think it might be a good idea, since there were some issues raised, uh, legal issues. And I know fire did already look at this, and this is not a new house. It's a little different than if you were gonna do a completely new house. It's maybe we should have some of those questions more formally answered and consider continuing this.
Absolutely. I, I just want to make sure we get our questions answered from the applicant and the appellant. John, any? You're muted. Can't hear you.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess the, the, the questions of the visibility of the, to the side, these other questions that other council members have asked. One other question is, is the, the neighbor to the north of this is also. has also spoken in that this new building takes away her view to the south and some of the light there. When I was there, I mean, obviously, I didn't go in her house. You know, I could just see that it was there and that, yes, she does have some south facing windows. The the two houses are pretty close together. And I, and I guess, you know, since we're not asking questions of that neighbor, you know, I guess Morgan is the representative of all the neighbors. So I guess this question would be directed at him. Is that, you know, to what extent is that view interrupted? Or changed by by the, you know, the increase in height? I understood that, though the drawings are talking about two feet, it's it's one feet foot higher. I guess, to what extent is that view changed? I guess, and and.
Yeah, I can address that. Did Anne, the neighbor there at 70 Mountain View. Anyway, that neighbor based at six, Six Walsh did alert me to this situation. And and it I wasn't so aware of a view of you there. I didn't, I, I was just alerted to the the light. And I think she had, Anne had a slide presented at the August 28 meeting, I believe, that showed the difference in what could be seen. And it is in the south direction. And I know that I've more than once been involved with situations where that kind of light is cut off. In fact, in San Rafael, I got involved with a situation where San Rafael requires, I think, 25% of the light in the rear yard, the rear yard being used for recreation to not be, can't be blocked. That's the situation in San Rafael. It's part of their their code. And it is something to be considered in particular because Anne Frye is a nurse. And she mentioned to me about the existence of swings. I think a swing shift worker. I want to say syndrome, but people that have irregular work hours, if they don't get regular sleep, they're prone to having suffering from this, which is manifests itself in depression and a number of things. She was, she was concerned about that. So raising that roof two feet does exacerbate the situation.
Okay, thank you so much, Morgan. And then Laura, would you like to respond to that? You would have a minute to talk about that view obstruction.
Okay, yes, I'm hi. So anyway, yes, I would just want to reiterate that nowhere on Six Walsh Lane can you see into 10 Walsh Lane. We we walked all over the property just to verify, to make sure there's only, there's like a solid wall of on of within on the 10 Walsh Lane, north side of the house. So and on the, on the other side, on the north side of Six Walsh Lane, there's only clear story windows proposed. There's an existing melaleuca tree. And John's right, we're only proposing to raise the house one foot after the structural engineer had a chance to do his, his portion of the work. And I think my adding, there shouldn't be any restriction to to light or anything into the into the the neighboring property at Manzanita by one foot. I mean, the ridge slopes at that point towards. So it's not like it's like a completely high solid wall at that point. The the roof line is slope. So I don't believe there's any going to be any impact to the to the light and all that that was suggested by the neighbor.
Okay, thank you. If no one else, I have one other question. Laura, I I'd like to start with you because I would like to understand the, there was an assertion that if you have a seven foot ceiling height, such as in the existing basement, that that's not considered a basement? And could you explain something around this, this definition of a basement? And how that, how that plays out here? Am I being clear enough?
Okay, yes, and I have to, I have to find my, I have to find my notes where I talked about that in my, in my rebuttal to the to the appellant's letter. But and town, I am town staff could maybe verify what I'm saying also. But it's, it's because the whole entire lower floor floor is unimproved. It's not counted as square footage. It's not finished space. I mean, you guys all toured it. It was clearly three quarters of the space has solid walls and is mostly below grade. But the back wall is, you know, it's like walkout basement type of situation. The back wall does have is, you know, full story. And is that, is that great? And I believe that the town, the town code is it, they don't count areas that's that isn't that that remind remains unfinished. So that's what.
Okay.
So we don't, we're not, we're not going over the point four, three FAR that was suggested. I mean, town staff and I verified, I sent exhibits illustrating the how I calculated the floor area. And town staff also verified that we are going beyond. We're staying below the the point four FAR. We're not going over it.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. And Morgan, before I go back to you, Ben, could you please just clarify that in terms of that any unimproved area is not counted toward the, toward the floor area?
I believe this is a matter more of practice than something that's in our code. Our, our basement definition doesn't address that. Unfortunately, this doesn't come up very often in Fairfax because we don't have very many basements. But I think Tara could probably also speak to this that if that has been the prior direction we've given the applicant in evaluating this project, that that would be correct.
Well, that doesn't quite do it for me. I would need, I would need a little more clarification on that. Kara, can you add something to that? Or if not, we could actually ask for more direction on that for for the next time we bring this. Okay, and so Morgan, Morgan, would you like that minute to, to talk about and maybe?
Two very specific definitions of the basement in the code. And one is that all four walls have to be partially sub below grade. That's one definition, which is not met by Six Walsh Lane. The other definition is that no place can, if if any wall is more than three feet above grade adjacent to a middle wall, it's not a basement.
Okay.
I talked about that with Linda Neal. She agreed with me that this is not a basement. And if it's a basement, the code says you don't have to count the square footage down there. But because it's a basement, you do count the square footage. The California Building Code says you have to take into account or count any space that's seven feet by seven feet by seven foot sticks high as occupiable, developable space. They say that they also say that it's any space that's easily converted to living space. And that clearly is what's going on at Six Walsh Lane. And it, what can go on, and then it is being converted easily into living space.
Well, that's, that's not even debatable. I mean, they are going to, that's a bedroom. Correct?
I'm sorry?
They're making it into a bedroom.
Yeah. But they counted, they said that space that always would they count zero square feet existed.
Okay, Morgan, so that minute is 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 up. And let me go back to Ben and Kara for one moment so that we don't get too far down the rabbit hole here.
Madam Mayor, this is Janet.
Hi, Janet.
Hi, I suggest instead of trying to hash this out right now, we're going to have to provide definitions and and give you something in writing to really look at, think about and absorb. Because this is not something that you can just kind of do right here.
No, it really isn't. I am, I'm sort of, I don't like to publishly publicly say this, but I am rather disappointed because we have to make a very important decision. So let's definitely take that back and get some of the clarification that we need in order to make thoughtful, informed decisions.
Yes, we can certainly do that for you.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, this is a really serious matter for both parties. And I feel like it could have been anticipated. Some of this could have been anticipated. And I don't like to kick the can down the road. You know, we we just voted on having two meetings per month because we have so much work to do in this town. And we're all here together to vote on this. And now we're going to, I'm, I'm hearing that you're going to continue this.
Well, we have to decide on that, Stephanie. And understandably, but these do get complicated. And I think it's important to take, take the steps we need to take. So.
So I'm in agreement. And I would say this is that these are really complicated issues. And I sat on that planning commission for a couple of years. This stuff is not simple. And I don't, I don't appreciate chastising staff or legal for not anticipating everything that would come up. So I think, you know, we need to, this is an important decision. We need to have the right information before us. I think part of what came out in this meeting was that we needed more information. And rather than making a decision just because we're concerned about taking up this important issue again, I think it makes a lot of sense to get more detail on these serious issues that have been raised by the appellant, have been attempted to be responded to by the applicant. And our staff isn't prepared to answer everything right now. So I, I would make a motion to continue this to the mid November meeting.
And with, thank you for the motion. I think it might be useful for us to add what it is that we'd like them to come back with so that we don't come back and not have it thorough.
Well, I think I would say, I'll try to say what I think those items are. Dealing with the setback issue, the floor area ratio, the issue of the area on the lower floor, the what is being termed unfinished or a basement, and how that relates to, does it count in the floor area ratio? And I would ask Janet Coulson in staff to add other things that I may have missed. So if somebody could speak up, I think I captured the main items.
Did you talk about the legal nonconformity and that piece?
Yes.
Talking about in the, when I talked about the setbacks.
Okay.
And the floor area ratio that deals with the issue of legal nonconforming. But I think that's a good addition to make sure that we cover that clearly. Janet, were you going to add something?
I was just going to say, I've been taking really good notes. I have a list of things that probably could use some more clarification.
Did you include the basement piece?
That's what I added is the third piece, Stephanie. And I would say that in order to finish the motion, I would, along with those primary issues, the other issues that legal and staff have taken notes on should be added to the materials that were provided before the next meeting.
Okay, and when would we be taking this backup realistically?
My feeling is it makes sense to do it November 18th because we may have a change. I think that's our next meeting, mid November. Because I think we'll have a change council in December. And I think it would be good to make sure that we have the same folks weighing in that have already.
Okay.
Listened and viewed, et cetera.
Okay, and we would then be inviting that the applicant and the appellant and all of the parties that are here today.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you all in the public for your comments and for pointing these things out to us. And we can get smarter and more prepared to make some really difficult decisions.
I think we need a second on that motion.
Anyone?
I was going to say I would second that motion. And and, yeah, I think it's, it's important to have all this out. And I would also underline Barbara's comment that, you know, nobody is to be faulted for not having everything, all these. It's a very complex issue. So I think nobody's to be faulted for not thinking of every detail ahead of time. I think that we just have to roll with the punches and do, do our best here. So with that, I second the motion.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion caller and a second read. Council member Hellman?
Aye.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Council member Kohler?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. And thank you, everyone. Thanks, Ben, for being here and Kara. And we'll see you on the 18th. Okay, so moving on. Actually, would anyone like to take a five minute break? I could use one. We'll see you all back here at, hi, Bruce. We'll see you all back here at 10:25.
Okay.
So everyone, we have four more items. They're all on the regular agenda, starting with item number 11, but it is 10:30. So if we could take a quick look and decide what everyone agrees we can get to, and we can make that decision right now.
It would seem to me that we should be able to get through these for the like they won't be as long as that one.
Okay, and others agree? Or yes, Stephanie? John? Okay, then here we go. So the next item is item number 11. And we will be hearing a staff report. And we'll be providing direction to staff regarding the closure and the uses of the lower portion of the monoparking lot. So Garrett, we haven't seen you all night. Nice to see you. Can you please give us a staff report?
Sure. You may recall just last week, actually, October 28th, the presentation on this topic. Part of that was a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce regarding its user and business surveys regarding monoparking lot. As part of that, the council ultimately actually continued the matter to this meeting discussion and direction to staff. And so on the staff report, we really came up with four options to consider regarding the closure of the lower portion of the monoparking lot. So currently, we close it Thursday through Friday. You could continue that process through the spring. You could allow the closure of mono lot on other days besides the Thursday through Friday for special events, such as maybe a local craft vendor booths or something like that. Number three, we said, close a lot for seven days a week. And actually, what we meant to say is you could choose to close the. And actually, what we meant to say is you could choose to close the lot for more than four days a week that you currently now. So five, six, seven, seven obviously would be the whole week. Or four, you could actually reduce the number of days that you close the monolot. Now, what's not in the staff report is we just had a discussion with the Chamber of Commerce late this afternoon. And so I'm talking to the chamber. Right now, how it works is Castlet House actually cleans the tables. So there's actually no cost for that. And they do that Thursday through Friday. The chamber and Castlet House would actually like to see the lot closed from Wednesday through Friday. And Castlet House, again, would then be responsible for cleaning, cleaning the tables. And he actually breaks down. He has now offered to actually set things up. Set up the tables, the chairs and the umbrellas, because right now the volunteers are doing that. So that would eliminate that part, at least Wednesday through, through Sunday. If we actually did that, that Castlet House would be responsible for cleaning tables, setting up and taking it down. Town staff actually closes lot on, right now, Thursday, and then reopens it up on Monday. But that's just some background you have related to the closures. Obviously, if you decide to close it Monday and Tuesday, that would be more of an issue because we would have to find somebody to set up and clean up tables because Castlet House is closed on Monday and Tuesday. And then at the last council meeting, you did talk about signage, concern to making sure the public know, knows it's open to the public. The banner does have that information that it's open to the public. But we have notes on what the council said for signage. We'll put signage on the tables, letting you know it's really for customers of downtown businesses that have food and drink, or whatever beverages, they're not allowed to use outside. Bring in outside food and beverages. I think someone said add no smoking. That's actually not allowed now, but we can make that clear in the additional signage, additional signage about wearing masks, keeping social distance. We could all do that. One of the things we wanted to talk about is while the chamber did its survey, that what we could do in the interim, the town could do its own survey of its residents, what is, its opinion is on a monolot during this interim period. That's not a problem. We could do that. I think in terms of staff's recommendation, based on our discussion with the chamber, is we think it'd be okay to close a lot one extra day, Wednesday through Sunday, assuming the Castlet House does clean, is willing to set up and break down the tables and chairs. I think that's fine. We can continue to actually put up the barriers and stuff on Wednesday and then take it down on Sunday. Side option with that would be if you wanted to allow for special events on Monday and Tuesday. I mean, that'd be fine. We have the capacity, obviously, to notice downtown businesses for those type of events. I actually don't think those events would happen all that often. But during the holidays, maybe you try to do one or two. It's hard to say. So with that, that pretty much concludes the staff report. Available to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for Garrett? Stephanie, you're mute. And John raised his hand. So John, go for it.
Okay, um, yeah, one of, one of the things that we discussed last time around was how keeping it open seven days would reduce the amount of work. But I guess this is because the stall house is not available to clean it on Monday, Tuesday. Who else is using this lot? I mean, it's, it sounds like more and more like an extension of the stall house to me. But what other nearby restaurants are also selling food to go and people eating it there?
Uh, I think other restaurants have used, well, I guess David Smedback, um, he's with the chamber. He could probably answer that question better than I can. I do know other people have been sitting there using it when they buy stuff from other restaurants and sit there. Primarily, though, if you go by, it does seem like a lot of Castlet House customers use it because, frankly, it's right next to them. I do know there's other users, but you could have, probably ask David for more details on that.
And you, also, the, um, the survey that was put out by the chamber by John Bella does address that. So there are certainly other users and people bringing food from the scoop, from Fairfax Cafe, from, from other places. But obviously, you have greater percentages of people bringing their stuff out of the Castlet House.
I mean, yeah, I guess that's my point, is it's supposed to be a community resource. And, you know, to have it totally driven by, you know, the stall houses availability seems just to drive it towards, you know, not less of a community thing.
Uh, other questions? Bruce? Can't hear you.
Yeah, maybe I could just kind of try to elaborate and keep on that question, because I think it's an important one. So I guess for one thing, the question might be, is there, does there seem to be any other town business who might be willing to do the cleaning that Castlet House is being, is doing on those two days that Castlet House is closed, Monday and Tuesday? And maybe, maybe there would be a business that would be willing to do that because it would seem that if the perception, and it seems logical that people might have the perception that it's a Castlet House extension because it's right next to Castlet House. And then if it's only open when Castlet House is open, that's just only gonna continue that perception. So it would seem that if other businesses were interested in having more of their customers use it so that they would have more customers, because this, it's a nice resource, that it might help with that if it were available on a day when Castlet House wasn't open. It would just, it would just make it more apparent to the public that it isn't just a part of Castlet House. So that's maybe another.
Thank you, that's, okay.
Is there another question?
Yeah, Barbara wanted to ask something, and then I wanted.
I just wanted to ask a question. I mean, I believe in reading your staff report, Garrett, you said that you think it's premature to talk about closing it for seven days a week before we do any survey and understand more about the community. That's correct, right? That's what I believe you said.
Yes.
And it seems like to me, just my view is, I don't think anybody really knows who's cleaning that and setting it up. It just seems to me like the compromise of adding one day. I, I know there are some folks in town that don't potentially care for the idea of closing it seven days a week. So I think doing that survey that you suggested is a good idea. But I just wanted to be clear that I believe you said it was premature at this time. So I, I kind of think we're going a little further afield.
Okay, Stephanie, did you have something? I wanted to, I wanted to then make a comment. And then I see David Smedback is here. And so he may make a few, just a brief statement.
I don't, I, I just want to make clear, I think, I think Barbara just did that. The new, the, the recommendation is to expand it from Thursday to Sunday, which it currently is now to Wednesday to Sunday. Is that correct, Garrett?
Uh, that's correct, based on the, the section of the chamber.
And I would love to hear, because we do have that survey. I would love to hear from David on what the updated survey results are for the current survey. And I would love to hear if there are any proposals to make enhancements, like the greenery we heard about last week and so forth.
Okay, great. And just real quick before, I think, Garrett, if it's okay with you, then we'll go to David, since his hand is up. But I just briefly wanted to comment to John and Bruce that, given that most of our restaurants and businesses are closed on Monday and some, a good number on Tuesday, especially the food establishments, the idea is a great idea to get others involved in being responsible for it and possibly, you know, have been, have, having more benefit for their own customers and things that that Monday, Tuesday is, is, is a very dark, dark days down there. And so the, the recommendation that Garrett's bringing forth makes a lot of sense at this time. And Monday, Tuesday is especially going into the darker and colder time, may be premature. And we may not get much benefit from going out to other businesses to ask them to take responsibility. But it's a good suggestion, maybe for the spring. So anyway, if it's okay with everyone, I was going to ask David if he wanted, because his hand is up, to make, to, to, to provide a brief bit of info and update, possibly some info that you may have any more results on their, on the survey. And then we'll also go straight to public comment. So David, if you wanna head it off. Michelle?
I've unmuted David.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, boy. So, anyway, um, the, I just briefly checked the survey before coming on tonight. And we have, we're up to 92 respondents. So people are definitely responding. And when I went through all the questions, the, the numbers were pretty consistent. We, you know, in terms of what John Bella reported the last meeting. You know, there, there's a lot of positive input towards it. The negative responses that I've been getting have been mainly for the people that use the parking lot. And that was from two parties in particular. But the extra added activity in this, at, at the monoparking lot has contributed to, you know, the, the feeling of activity in town. It creates an attractive element for, for people to want to come down and, and patronize our businesses. And I think everybody feels really positive about it. The practical reality is Castlet House is, is the closest water source. And they, they, they graciously said they would caretake it because obviously they're gonna benefit highly from it. But it, it's sort of a symbiotic relationship in that, you know, we get the benefit of their, their taking care of it. And, you know, we'll continue with increasing signage. There are some umbrellas that need to be replaced. So the chamber will stay involved. And we probably will still give a hand with the, the setup and takedown on the, on the major days, which are like when, if we moved to Wednesday, it'd be Wednesday and Sunday. That's pretty much all I had to add to the discussion. If you guys had any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, David.
About the enhancements, David?
Say again?
The enhancements, like the greenery?
Well, the, those would be wonderful to have. Again, the, the lack of water source at the, at the property makes that a challenge. And I think there's gonna have to be some kind of dedication towards getting a water source to that. And I, I'll talk to John Bella about that. Because I, I think it would be great to have some, some of the greenery that he's talking about and some of the other amenities that he wants to add.
Thank you.
David, real quick, have you got any more results from the business survey that you sent out to the businesses, not just the public one?
Uh, no, there, there, we, we had 14 respondents to that. And, you know, we'll, we'll reach out again and, and try to, maybe we'll even do a phone, phone call session and just talk to people directly to see if we get more of a feel for their feeling for it.
Okay, great. Thank you for all the, all the hard work on that. And let's see if anyone in the public would like to comment on this item. Anybody out there? Michelle?
Um, oh, yes. Hands are just coming up. Okay. So Deborah Benson, followed by Brenna Gubbins. Deborah, you're unmuted.
Hi, Dewey Benson, Cascade Drive. Let's see, um, the, this afternoon, when I was coming back from wherever I was coming back from, there was somebody there with a guitar and a couple of people hanging around, somebody smoking a cigarette, and not very many people hanging out in that area. I don't think tables were up. I'm not even sure what. COVID, forgive me. But I do see people hanging out there, not eating or drinking, not practicing social distancing, not wearing masks. And I have yet, I, I drive by there at least twice a day. And I have yet to see someone sanitizing tables. You know, when the monolot was being used by Castlet House, I did see them coming out and making sure people were social distancing and sanitizing tables. And I thought that Chamber of Commerce had someone who was going to be doing that. So, so I think someone needs to be overseeing this and providing enforcement of social distancing and sanitizing tables. And as far as the survey goes, I wonder how many of the people who responded are residents of Fairfax? And how many are tourists? So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, and Deborah, just for clarification, if I may, the only time the tables are set up is when the Castlet House is actually maintaining them. So there are no other times where there are tables that are not being sanitized. In terms of people hanging out at the lot, that's a whole different story. But that's not under the sanctioned program partnership of the town and the chamber on the monolot. But thanks for keeping your eyes out. Any other members of public?
Uh, yes, Brenna Gubbins, you're unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Hi. One suggestion, if we could put a hand wash, hand washing station somewhere out there for the public to use. We don't have that through town, and it would be really great if we could provide one or two throughout town. Another thing was the survey, the same thing, kind of echoing what Deborah just said about the survey. Only 92 people responded. If we can, definitely wait until we hear more from the people in town before making any decisions. Just a thought. Thank you. That's all, that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brenna. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
I do not see any other hands.
Okay, terrific. So bringing it back to council. This was just a report, and we would provide direction to Garrett. It seems to me on the choices of how many days to close and any other comments around signage that you'd like to make, go for it now. Barbara?
Yeah, I would like to propose that we add Wednesday. And appreciate that Castlet House is willing to clean the tables and set up. I also liked the suggestion that Brenna Gubbins talked about a hand washing station. And I've seen those in many other places, Woodlands Market and other places. I, I don't think they're that expensive. And it might be a good idea to have, I mean, that's beyond the monolot, but definitely at least one in the monolot. And then consideration, maybe when we take up the other items, that maybe we should add another one in the area where people are really sort of hanging out. That would be great. But otherwise, and I like the idea of staff doing a survey as well. And want to thank David in particular at the chamber, who's just been steadfast. And those of you volunteers who've really set up. But I think this is good for us, particularly in the winter, where we're not gonna have that many activities. Just one thing I want to register is on. Just one thing I want to register is on a previous staff report, there was some discussion of potentially music or a stage. Let's not go there, please. You know, I, maybe potentially one special event, but I do not want to go back to the complaints about the music downtown and stuff. I think we're really trying to enliven the businesses, so I would prefer that we kind of hold off on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other council members have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I would like to also bring up, I mean, last week, we talked about, you know, the possibility that perhaps there's, you know, artists in town that, you know, especially with the holiday season coming up, there might be some sort of event. You know, I think we shouldn't let that fall off the radar if there is interest in that. You know, that would also be a good use adjacent to or in combination with, or, you know, it really depends on what the needs are. And I'd like to support also the reaching out to other businesses and getting more comments.
That's great. Any other thoughts, Stephanie or Bruce? If, if I may, I appreciate that we'll be adding Wednesday, it sounds like, if everyone's up for it. I would like to propose that we keep flexibility about the use of the Monday, Tuesday. Should we have any of these types of artisan events? I'm not calling it an event, like we're throwing a craft fair. I'm just talking about opportunities to safely distance in order to support our artists to come out and have a little bit of a holiday spirit and show their wares. So if we could have that flexibility, should someone come forward or something, get organized so that we wouldn't have to come back to council to approve, you know, this particular Monday or that particular Monday. But it wouldn't be on a consistent basis, just like what Garrett said, it wouldn't probably happen very often. But if we could reserve that flexibility, that would be very helpful. And.
That could, Renee, that could conceivably happen on a Thursday through Sunday in the current. Right? You don't need the Wednesday extension to do that, right? You just, you just need support, you just need support for that type of an event at mono.
Yeah, but I'm thinking that we'll reserve, at least while the weather holds, expanding it to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that we'd be using it in the configuration and the way we have been. But that if there happens to be the opportunity, when Gestalt is closed, and we could use the lot for something creative to help our artists, just to reserve that potential. If council's up for that, on a case-by-case.
With that, yeah.
I guess I just want to register that I have some concerns about that. You know, I'm not sure what our holiday season is going to be like. But we have to think about the retail businesses in town. And parking will be an issue of people are going to come shopping. And we do like people to go shopping locally. So I would say, I'm supportive of the idea of special events, but why don't we keep it within the Wednesday through Sunday? I don't think that's going to be a big trial. And we really need to think about the retail businesses. It's not just about the dining. So that we encourage people to buy things with our retail businesses that have been really hurting as well. So my idea would be, it's okay to do special events potentially, but not close it on Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, even to keep it flexible, if someone wanted to come in and apply for that, come down for that night. You'd rather us keep it in the Wednesdays through Sunday?
I'm hearing what Renee is saying, and it makes sense to me that we're not deciding to do something right now. We're just saying that we don't want to preclude it and then have to go through a council meeting in order to decide it. So I would have no problem with saying that if occasionally, like maybe once this whole season, if it turned out that some kind of a special event were to be, it would be good to have that on a Monday or Tuesday, then I would be fine with saying tonight that it doesn't have to come back before council. I think that's all you were saying, Renee, and that makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me also.
Stephanie, did you ever thought about that?
I'm more stuck on the greater issue of extending this through spring right now and the absence of really having public input. I'm less concerned about this. So no, I don't have a comment on this. I'm fine with.
Okay, well, we are talking.
I'm fine with the flexibility of having events. And I'm in support of supporting the artists during the holidays. I think it would actually bring in additional traffic flow to the retailers. So.
Yeah, and we'll talk about, item thirteen is actually exactly what you're referring to in terms of discussing the use permits.
Well. I'm, I'm just, like, are we, if we vote to extend the mono lot closure to Wednesday and through the spring, are we committing to a survey on the, like, are we also committing to survey? Are we committing to, you know, is it just going to look like the way it looks right now? And, you know, I've been talking about hand sanitizer for a very long time. Are we also going to commit to that? I mean, how, how much can we add into this? Because as it is, I'm not really on board, but I think I could get there if we commit to some of these other things.
I think staff already talked about doing the survey, so why don't we provide direction to do that survey? And then I already brought up the issue that Brenna Gubbins brought up about a hand washing station. Rather than hand sanitizer, one of those things with the foot pedal that you wash your hands on. I think that would be a great thing. And I think that gets to some of your issues that you just raised, perhaps, or not.
Looks like Garrett wants to talk.
So, yes, so the hand washing stations, obviously, we could do that. What the issue will be, be the maintenance of it. If Gestalt House can maintain it, I think we probably have to pay for supplies. That'd be better, because the issue is always with those things, putting in the water. You actually need to sanitize those things. You have paper towels, you have the soap. So that's one thing. And then we got to put it someplace so we don't need to move it when the lots open. So we can address that. The survey, we can do that. The issue for other improvements, I think the problem, one of the problems that David had mentioned is we talked about some kind of mobile plan or boxes on wheels. And then the question is, where do you store it when the lot is, you know, is open? And how do you store it to make sure it gets water and doesn't get, walk away, or in this case, roll away? And so those are all issues that would need to be addressed. Hand washing station, there's a cost, there's the maintenance thing. I'm sure we can work that out Gestalt House, if we have it out there. The issue for the hand washing station is it will always be out there. So the days that Gestalt House can't service it, then there's the Mondays and Tuesdays. I guess we could figure that out.
I think they actually come on rollers, so potentially Gestalt House could store it in their building.
Okay, so can I make a comment, being down there all the time working on this stuff? Is that, one, I, as you know, I do all the ways to the Fairfax Festival, and the water runs out of those things. And I've called buckets all over this town, pouring water into those hand washing things. So the Good Earth has a really good one that's out there, and it's got multiple sides. And then you can use the hand sanitizer in it, and it's easy to refill. I would highly recommend we don't work with water. Also, there's no hose out of there. Gestalt House is having some plumbing problems. So there's a lot of things that we don't, we're not seeing on the surface. So I think simplicity, but sanitation is really the key here.
That sounds good. Let's take your suggestion.
Okay, that would be great. And then I just want, for the record, to say that I respectfully, Barbara, disagree about the music. I think right now we do have to look at things as baby, baby steps. I mean, the paint on the lot right now needs a complete refreshing. The garbage cans need a lot of help. There's, we're really just making this go Fairfax-style, step by step, and it does need great improvement. But let's start with what we can start with, which is sanitation and a survey, and then grow it. And it's sort of what I see happening anyway, but it can get grungy. So we really do need to keep an eye on it. Bruce?
So, thank you for that. And for, to what Stephanie was saying, I'm unclear, are we, are we deciding at this point that we want to? I thought when we were deciding at this point, in addition to the couple of other things that have come up that you were just talking about, is whether to open it on Wednesday as well. I didn't think we were deciding at this point on how many months it's going to be open. We don't.
Oh, yeah, that's in the staff report. Yeah, through spring.
Okay.
Now, as the council, you could change your mind at any time.
That's what I was going to say, that.
And we could, you know, I guess we could come back to you, you know, you could put it on the agenda every month with our.
Well, or it could just, you know, staff or any of the council members could put it on the agenda as, you know, that it looks like maybe it's not working at this point, and then we can decide to close it. So I don't think we're committing to having to keep it open, even if it's not working, just because we decided now. We, we don't know, I mean, for example, this winter might be a dry winter, or it might be a wet winter. And, you know, if it's a wet winter, it may not make any sense at all. You know, so we just don't know, and I don't think we have to really commit that strongly to that at this point. And I think the main question is the Wednesday thing, which I think is a good idea. I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so if I could just summarize, Garrett, it sounds like we're all in agreement about Wednesday through Sunday. And we are in agreement that we will be looking at this flexibly in terms of, you know, how long this is going to go, and we'll continue to review it. We'll be doing a town survey to run alongside the Chamber's survey of businesses and the public, which are really the public that are using the space. But the townwide survey would be the Peak Democracy Forum that people can access from our website, and we'll promote that. I think.
And you want a hand sanitizer station or something like that?
That would be great.
Okay, sure, got it.
Okay, all good? Okay, super. So moving on, we are going to item number twelve. And this is the item to approve a six-month schedule of monthly special meetings. And Garrett, would you like to give us a staff report, please?
Sure, you recalled your special meeting last week, October twenty-eighth. You discussed the concept of holding two regular meetings a month. After you had a discussion, then reached consensus, schedule one special meeting a month in addition to your regular meeting a month, and that we would come back to you with the schedule so you could see what it would look like. So what we did, you could see in the staff report, we built this out through May of two thousand, two thousand twenty-one. And it would be actually starting in November. So what we have, if you look at this, we had six special meetings. November eighteenth, and we did December sixteenth, and we did February seventeenth. And those are all the third Wednesdays of the month. We did not include January, because of the holidays in January. Your first meeting in January slides to the middle part of the month. So really, there's not enough time for another meeting. So you have one meeting in January. In March, what we did is you normally have your retreat in March. And so that's always a special meeting. So we just had that as March nineteenth as a special meeting. If for some reason the council says, well, that is a special meeting, but we want a regular special meeting, then we could do something like do the third Wednesday of March, which would be, I believe that's like March seventeenth, your retreat rather than March nineteenth on a Friday. We can move that to the following Friday. That seems to work, because part of our concern as staff is making sure we're not on a Friday that's an agenda. Prep Friday, that creates problems. Make sure it's not a Friday, it's following a council meeting. We've done things like that before, and it's really tough for the council and staff to have your retreat after you've met late on a Wednesday, difficult for budget. So in April, we had one in April. And in May, which is actually month seven, theoretically, beginning of May, you will evaluate how this all worked. So that's why in May, we just kept the budget workshop as May twenty-first. The problem there of trying to use the third Wednesday is you have all these conflicts with the budget workshop. You know, would happen two days after that special meeting. You can't move the workshop just because you're too close to the previous meeting, beginning of the month, or it's on an agenda Friday. So that's why we did not do another meeting in May, and we prefer not to. More importantly, we think the council's actually going to evaluate everything in your first meeting in May. So really, there's probably not a need to do that. And one thing important to note is we have these special meetings starting at six-thirty. And so how it would work is if you said, yes, this sounds good, we put all these meetings on the calendar. We put the times, and then if you didn't need a meeting, then the council would actually, we'd have to go through the process of actually canceling, formally canceling that meeting, because it's on the calendar, it's expectation. So that's what we did. Now, subset of all this is, we talked about, council did last week, about what will be measures of success. And we said we could have another meeting or put it on the agenda to talk about. So as staff, we think we know what the measures of success would be, because it's all data-driven. But we don't need to talk about that tonight. We could talk about it at another meeting. And then one of the things I need to point out is, for this month, November eighteenth, which obviously you're having now, because you've continued the public hearing to that. For those of you that have Ross Fire Fire Board, that meeting is actually also on November eighteenth. So we're going to ask the Fire Board to see if they could start their meeting earlier, like at six. So it doesn't, or actually, if this starts at six-thirty, we'll have to ask the Fire Board to make it a little earlier. But here's, that's a good example, though, of unattending consequences for all these special meetings. A lot of the other boards that you're on sometimes change their meetings, and you have this conflict. So we just, that's just something to keep in mind. So for the Fire Board, we'll see how early we could start it. Most likely, what happened is you'll attend the Fire Board, maybe it's at five forty-five, and you'll have to leave it at six-thirty to attend the special meeting. So with that, that's the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Questions of staff? John? No? Anyone?
No, thank you for putting this together, and still need to send you some KPIs or metrics of success relating to this pilot.
Okay. I don't have questions. I do have a comment, but I'd like to go out to the public. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this matter? Michelle?
Madam Mayor, I do not see any raised hands. Let me be just give them a minute. That was fast.
Okay.
Doesn't look like anyone.
Okay, so let's bring it back here. We are approving the six-month schedule and the newly scheduled special meetings. Does anyone have a comment before I make a comment? John?
Sure, yeah, I guess I'm not muted. Yeah, I just, you know, especially because I won't get a lot of chance to say this, but some of the comments that I made in my last, last time we talked about this was, you know, looking at really what the results are, you know, and so that people can understand, you know, so they don't have to wait through a four-hour meeting just to see if their item is going to come up. so they don't have to wait through a four-hour meeting just to see if their item is gonna come up or not. We have developed some way to communicate with the public how the schedule is looking so that they they can have some way of, you know, maybe it maybe it's a moving schedule or something. But so so that, you know, that they don't have to sit there for hours to just to find out whether we're gonna get to something or not, because that we gotta respect the public's time too. Or you should, I should say, going forward.
It's always a we, John, it's always a we.
Okay, yeah, well, it's the community then, yeah.
Um. So so I did have a comment, um, and I I had a reaction to looking at the fact that our March meeting. Um, let's leave May aside, but that our March meeting, we were we were counting the annual council retreat as our special meeting. So we would be having our initial meeting, our regular meeting, and then the council retreat would count as the special meeting. I, for the sake of real measurement and comparing the before and after or the benefit of having an extra meeting, I feel as though we should be comparing apples to apples and adding another special meeting on the March agenda. The council retreat is not necessarily a special meeting in order to deal with council business and the public's business. So um I I just want to be fair so that we have a really good measurement um of the effectiveness of having two meetings, one regular, one special. I don't know what you all think about that, but um I felt strongly about that.
What about if we wait until, um, I think, when would our March, our first March meeting be? Like March second or something like that?
March third.
March third, so.
March third. So your special meeting would be March seventeenth.
Okay.
March twenty-six. So the retreat on March twenty-sixth is fine, it doesn't create any agenda.
So when do we do that?
That would be my preference.
So March seventeenth, I put these all on my calendar, March seventeen for the special and then March twenty-sixth for the retreat.
Does that sound good to everyone?
Can you say it one more time, March seventeenth for the special?
Yeah, and then March twenty-sixth for the retreat. Is that gonna be, Garrett, if it's March twenty-sixth for the retreat, is that gonna be a problem? Because that's Packet Friday?
Uh, no, because your April meeting's not till April seventh.
Okay, very good.
Perfect.
Okay, thanks, Renee.
Yeah, you bet. Um, okay, so um I think, do we need, do you need a motion for that, Garrett, to approve these dates?
Uh, sure, I think that'd be good. I I mean, it'd just be good to have that.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion with those corrected dates?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar with the change uh having a special meeting on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and changing the council retreat to March twenty-sixth.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, uh, second, Hellman, uh, Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman. And myself, yeah, I I vote aye, and uh we are moving on to item number thirteen. Um. It's a long subject, but I will read that. It's uh the adoption of an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax authorizing the town manager to issue temporary outdoor use permits to allow restaurants and other businesses to provide outdoor dining, other retail commercial uses and curbside pickup, and waiving any applicant fees in the town's review process. And authorizing the expiration date of such permits to be set by resolution and adoption of a resolution setting a, oh, setting an expiration date of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for the issuance of temporary outdoor use permits to allow restaurants and other businesses to provide outdoor dining, other retail commercial uses and curbside pickup categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. La la, class one, existing facilities. Garrett, staff report, please.
Okay, uh, so, you know, you're ready to call at your October twenty-eighth meeting. Um, really given the uncertainty related to COVID nineteen, council introduced an ordinance to extend the temporary use permits through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The original expiration date was actually the end of this month, eleven thirty, twenty twenty. Um, this is actually the adoption and second reading of the ordinance, and it it'll take effect in about three days. I think the benefit for doing this is that it really prevents a significant gap between expiration and the end of November and the effective date, which is uh December fourth for the TUPs. Other Proles ordinance does um allows us to issue uh temporary use permits, TUPs, for initial twenty days with the ability to extend up to ninety-day periods. Um, TUPs all expire on a date set by the council. Um, and what we've done is the ordinance allows the council to set the expiration expiration date by resolution. And so in this packet, that's why you have the resolution that says that the uh initial uh date of the expiration of this ordinance will be May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And as we had noted last week during the staff presentation, that we will be confirming with businesses if they want to extend the TUPs and also letting them know of any requirements that may apply to them related to any coverings they may want to put on their structures. So with that, that's the staff report.
Great, thank you, Garrett. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, um, any public comment on this item? Uh, Michelle, do you see any?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, so bringing it back to council, um, if anyone has anything to say. If not, I will entertain a motion to move forward with this uh waiving the second reading.
I'll go ahead, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
So I'd like to waive the second reading and read by title only and adopt an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax authorizing the town manager to issue temporary outdoor use permits to allow restaurants and other businesses to provide outdoor dining, other retail commercial uses and curbside pickup, and waiving any applicant fees in the town's review process and authorizing the expiration date of such permits to be set by resolution and adopt a resolution setting an expiration date of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for the issuance of temporary outdoor use permits to allow restaurants and other businesses to provide outdoor dining, other retail commercial uses, and curbside pickup.
Not to, not to criticize that lovely reading, but should there be two separate? Are are these two separate votes, the uh the the resolution being a second vote?
Well, they.
It's the next item.
I mean, they can, they they.
Not the next item, it's.
They can't, you can take the vote. Yeah, you could vote separately on each item, uh, if that makes people feel more.
Doesn't make me feel any.
More clear, so that I think that's fine.
Okay.
So are we making a friendly amendment to only do the first part?
It's fine with me to do them together, and I would second that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, and a second, Ackerman, um, uh, Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye, and so that uh motion carries. Thank you, everyone. So we are at our last item, um, which is item number fourteen. And this is to adopt a resolution to extend the terms of temporary outdoor encroachment permits till May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, and Garrett, uh, once again, would like to ask for a staff report.
Okay, well, this is pretty similar to the discussion you just had, an extension for your temporary use permit ordinance. Last week, you had a discussion, Rob, um, regarding uh extension of what we refer to as temporary encroachment permits. Um, and that's for business, giving businesses the ability to put their use, what's the best way to describe it? Allow them to use outdoor dining and other business uses in public spaces such as parking spaces. Uh, last week at your October twenty-eighth meeting, you indicated staff, that would be a good idea, come back to you with a resolution. So this is the resolution, and similar to your TUPs, this actually extends to temporary encroachment permits to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Something that's a little different is that while allows for the initial approval for um a hundred and twenty days. What we discovered is we wanted it to match up with the TUPs, which is extensions can be granted up to ninety-day periods. So create some consistency between temporary encroachment permits, TUPs, and temporary use permits, TUPs. We just wanted to create some consistency, so there is less confusion among staff and the community. Um, and so with that, pretty much, we'll do the same thing. Uh, we'll contact all the T P holders and confirm whether they still need a T P whether they're interested in an extension or or not. So there'll be some cleanup there, because some probably aren't gonna need it anymore at other facilities. Uh, I'd assume most people are gonna want it to continue in the parking spaces, since they have structures in it. So with that, that concludes staff report.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Any questions from council? Nope, um, any members of the public wish to comment? I see a hand.
Yes.
Sorry, Michelle, I'm taking your.
I'm so excited to see you.
Um, would you let, would you uh go ahead and call on people, please?
Sure. Uh, there are two people. The first is Richard Applebaum, and the second is Brenna Gubbins. Okay, so you're unmuted.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, so I'm, I don't know if this is the appropriate agenda item to get into this piece of the conversation. Um, in general, I'm very supportive of the parklets and maximum flexibility for all small businesses during COVID and in general. And I know that many have taken a shine to parklets, uh, because certain aspects of them are cool. Um, and I know that Roastery has a petition going, and they're trying to get support from the community to have that made permanent. And, you know, I hate to be a broken record, others have brought this up in different contexts and at different times. I think Deborah, at the beginning of this meeting, tried to bring this up as well. Um, I continue to have concern about the narrowing of Balinas because of emergency vehicle access, particularly the corner element with Roastery where things would be possibly coming in a hurry around around the bend there. And it's occurred to me that um there's maybe more room on the other side, maybe the bike stand. And it's been mentioned that the bike stand can maybe be moved to the parcade, and Roastery could, I want Roastery to thrive. I I I'm happy for them that they're, that they've got a positive result with having the outside seating. It's, I'm not trying to be a naysayer or opposed to that, it's just a safety concern. It's the same ca- safety concern we've spoken about at meetings over the last number of years, when we've talked about bobouts and other things. And I just did my own little, you know, survey of person of one, just sta- standing there one day, just noticing that um, while technically the wood does not extend beyond the sort of white dash that represents the maximum width of a parking space. As I looked down the block and I saw all the cars and pickup trucks and things, clearly the wood is farther, is wider in totality than any other parked car. So maybe if there was a truck or a bus there, it might be of a similar width. But all the rest of the parked cars have a few less inches sticking out. And so, um, you know, whatever needs to be done, short-term, um, you know, keep businesses thriving. If they can't really have any distant seating inside right now or whatever, I don't know what's gonna happen when the rain and the cold and the wind come. But I'm just, I'm nervous about laying the foundation for this being a permanent thing forever. And so I just wanted to be at least one voice to the community that is not ready to sign that petition. I would like them to have something, if it could happen on the other side, this is another configuration that could give them an outside seating option, I would be all for it. I'm just really, really nervous about narrowing Balinas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard, very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next is Brenna Gubbins, followed by Deborah Benson. Brenna?
Hi, um, I was actually gonna say what Rick said as well. Um, one thing that I really noticed is that right now, uh, there's planters kind of blocking the view of the crosswalk, and it's really, I feel like it's a really important thing to have full visibility in the crosswalks and uh removing the planters, the planters that are there that are blocking it. Um, right on Broadway, going across Broadway over to the bus stop. Um, and then when you're making that turn, I just, it's gonna start raining soon. It's really hard in those crosswalks, there's not enough lighting. Um, and it's just, it gets really dangerous in the winter. So that's just my, my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Brenna. Uh, next speaker, please.
Deborah Benson.
Hi, Deborah Benson. Um, I fully support the efforts of all of the uh downtown restaurants to continue their business. Um, I would suggest that rather than blocking our evacuation route and making it impossible for an earth mover in case of a wildland fire to make that turn up on uh our, you know, onto Balinas, that the coffee roastery move around onto Broadway. Move the bike racks over onto the parcade where people actually park. Uh, they could share the 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 seating after their hours with the pizza place and give us back our loading zone, because that's become a real problem in town. Um, I know uh some of the owners of of establishments in town have had problems with delivery options. I know that some of the residents have filed police reports, because people are not going up to Bank Street. The delivery guys are not going up to Bank Street and maneuvering through the Amelie and the hummingbird tables to get down to the restaurants at the corner of uh Broadway and Balinas. So um, uh, I think that this thing needs to move around the corner, and we need our loading zone back. We're blocking, what what the trucks are doing is just parking in a lane of Balinas and blocking traffic. Or as I saw a Cisco driver do, uh, pull up in front of Broadway back up to take up a lane of Balinas, and I had to kind of like go into the opposite lane and Harry scary myself around the back of his truck, hoping nobody was coming up, you know, in the opposite lane to to go east. So I would really like to see the restaurants continue taking the parking spaces. But I would like to see this particular one move around the corner to Broadway where it's more safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Are there any other speakers?
I do not see any other speakers.
Okay, so uh bringing it back to council, any any comments from anyone? I have a couple of comments. Anyone else? Just one. Oh, Barbara.
Um, just, I think I brought this up at the last meeting. Um, some of the folks um, particularly at the corner of Broadway and Balinas have tables in the road. Um, I I think with their street extension or parklet, they don't need those, and that's not approved. And we need to get those moved. It's in the way of people. And then I know we like the plantings, that was something we worked with the chamber on. But I think, given what we're going through right now, can we move those plantings to another area? Just because I think they're also in the way with people trying to maneuver down those sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, and then I think on the other side, there's a curbside pickup that's a little bit of a problem. And the last thing I've. And the last thing I've asked for is that we have some good signage that makes it really clear that these delivery drivers need to go around the block. Um, rather than double parking, this isn't San Francisco, this isn't New York City. And we need to do some enforcement around that if the businesses won't do a good job of telling their delivery drivers to go to the other loading zone. Those are my last thoughts. I mean, otherwise I'm supportive of this. I think the issues that have been raised about the coffee roastery parklet um, are not something we can deal with tonight about moving it. I think that would be kind of a big deal with the pizza place. Uh, but I think one of the things you made clear last time, Renee, was we're not talking about doing these things permanent right now. And so that's a broader community conversation. And I think at some point we really do need to work with the coffee roastery maybe sooner than, than now because people have raised the issues that it may be posing a little bit of a hazard right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
Yeah, I, I would agree with a lot of what Barbara just said, um, about the permanency. It's obviously not what we're talking about this evening. And I just want the residents of Fairfax to know that we are committed to having far more input in a community dialogue around that. And just because the coffee roastery has been campaigning hard for, um, permanency doesn't mean that, um, you know, we're not going to open it up for, um, broader public input. And I would say that a lot of the comments we're getting from patrons are not Fairfax residents and, um, are probably not thinking about that evacuation concern that so many people have. So I just wanted to, you know, reinforce that message and, you know, we should, we should be thinking about a survey in the coming months because spring will be here before you know it. And they're, you know, likely going to want to start talking about extending or permanency. So we should just be expecting that conversation, um, as far as, you know, what's going to be on the docket in the springtime. And I support what Brenna and Barbara said related to the planters. Thank you.
John?
As do I. I mean, I think we need to leave, you know, visibility and access to that crosswalk open. I mean, I, I, I think that that extra table that was out by the bike rack, that, that was definitely disappeared by, uh, by Saturday anyway. You know, after our last meeting.
It was back today.
It was back today? Okay, well, I guess it's a mobile. Um, whack.
There's more than one. Sometimes there's two.
It's a whack-a-mole situation, you know, and they're, they're going to keep on popping back, obviously. You know, they, more tables means more business for them. And I can see why they're, you know, banging the drum to try to make it permanent and all that. But that, that's really their issue and I, I want to underline, you know, what Stephanie has said and Barbara said, you know, that really that's a bigger conversation. The other thing, uh, in terms of Bolinas being an evacuation route, it is an evacuation route, but talking to our fire chief and, you know, and, you know, saying what, you know, what are the issues for them, you know, getting fire trucks in and out of there? And he says, that's not a problem. That's not an issue. I mean, they do not, you know, if, if there's cars parked there or trucks parked there or whatever, or a parklet is there, it's the same for them. Uh, so, so it's kind of a non-issue in terms of that. I mean, um, Dealey brought up like, oh, maybe it's a, a giant truck with a, a kind of pillar tractor on it, which, you know, I, I may have seen one or two of those go by in the last 25 years. But it, it's, it's hard to base your life around that. And, and I believe that that can be dealt with. You know, it's, it's not, it shouldn't be the driving issue on whether we have a thriving downtown or not. This is a temporary issue. Right now we're dealing with, you know, reaction to COVID and trying to keep our businesses alive. And, you know, frankly, I'm getting a lot of positive responses from people about downtown. We, we have a lot of, you know, it's, it's not a ghost town, which a lot of places are, and that's to everybody's credit. And, uh, that's the objective here, so. That's it.
Bruce, did you have something? Because I have a few things.
I agree with all of those comments and, uh, yeah, there's a lot of reasons why tonight is not the night to address long-term of usage, among, among them being public input, but among them also being that we still have a winter ahead of us. And we're going to see, we're going to learn a lot this winter about how these outdoor, uh, uses work. All the merchants are, are thinking about that and, and we're, we're all collectively going to learn a good bit about it. So that will help to inform our decisions as well. So I think we'll, uh, for, for tonight, I, I support this resolution before us, which is just simply to extend it until May 31st for right now. And, um, keep on going under the, basically the COVID temporary regime for the moment.
Um, so, so if I might just briefly jump on and piggyback John Reed's statement around fire. And that is, um, I asked that question directly of the fire chief at the last Ross Valley Fire Board meeting. Um, he said this has come up elsewhere in the county because many of the downtowns are primary evacuation routes, uh, through the towns. And people are asking and are concerned and rightly so. And I, um, we are listening and his response was very clearly that the difference between having a delivery truck in one of the, in that delivery zone is absolutely no different than having a parklet there. In fact, people could be moved away and out of the parklet, whereas a delivery truck of that size would be an impediment to a fire truck coming through. Uh, in terms of excavators, I understand even John, if you haven't seen it in 25 years, we haven't had that terrifying fire in the 25 years. So, um, we want to be as safe as possible. My concern and Garrett, I would really, um, really strongly request of you that we do signage for the delivery trucks to move on to Bank Street. Because being down there and watching what happens when those delivery trucks either park in front of a fire hydrant or they double park, God forbid, that is a pure blockade. And I don't believe that that, that that precious piece of real estate on Bolinas where the coffee roastery's temporary parklet is, uh, should be used for a big truck getting in and out. It should be up on Bank Street, however, has been recommended by the traffic engineer. Um, and let's use our precious downtown space and, and make it, and make it, and make it safe. Uh, Richard, I hear you. Um, it does extend slightly farther than I feel, uh, entirely comfortable with um, onto that outside line. But, uh, nonetheless, fire has, um, absolutely signed off on it. And, uh, this is through multiple fire sources because I keep asking. John?
You're muted.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to circle, I forgot to add in the, the, the loading area. There's a reason why the trucks are not parking up on Bank Street. I mean, they're, they've got heavy items, they're, you know, they've got to move them to stores. Bank Street is on a hill. Uh, they've got, it's, you know, you got to go all the way around the block, around through stop signs, traffic on hills, carrying really heavy goods. There, there's a reason why they're parking in front of of, of stores because they need to do the deliveries there. You know, it, it's, it's really an encumbrance, I think, to ask them to park, you know, a block or two away from where they're making a delivery on a hill to do that. You know, I mean, it might work for some of them sometime, but they're, they're clearly voting with their feet and parking where they need to park in order to get their job done. You know, maybe that this real solution has come up with another place that's flat and central to have a loading zone. You know, it's not necessarily right there on that corner. You know, maybe it's down more in towards, in front of Perry's or something like that. You know, just somewhere where we can manage it. But I think Bank Street is, it's being demonstrated that it's, it's not a, a, a good solution.
Okay. Um, Stephanie?
Yeah, could you just help me better understand, um, your comment? I think you said, uh, Chief Weber said it's, there's no difference between the delivery truck being parked there and moving a truck and moving a, a parklet? Cause I, is the, I'm not, I'm not following that. Cause the, like the coffee roastery, for example, that's not, that's not on wheels or anything, right? I mean, how would you, how would you move that like you could move a truck if you needed to?
I, I think the point was that it's the kind of a structure there that could be taken out and people could be moved off of and moved out of danger's way. Versus a delivery truck stuck there and who knows where the driver is and that engine needs to come through. You, you, you're stopped. It's not perfect. It's, it's not a, you know, it, it's, it's, it's not a great situation either way, obviously. But that was the comment is that you're in the exact same situation. If not worse, don't let me misspeak, John.
I think what we're referring to, right, is that in an emergency, a fire truck can actually just push it out of the way. Whereas they would do with a parked car. That's what a fire truck will do. They've said that repeatedly. If, in our narrow streets, if someone is parked on the street in a place where they shouldn't be parked and a fire truck needs to come through, they will not hesitate to push the car out of the way and it'll damage the car, but hey, they're saving a house, saving a life. So I think that's what they're talking about. Yeah, that it, they could push that thing out of the way. Whereas if there was a giant beer truck there, they couldn't even push it out of the way. So I think that's what I interpreted that statement to mean, just to clarify. It's not a scenario any of us want to see, but that's what the fire people think about.
Yeah. And, and more importantly, I think they can get through in the, in the travel lane. You know, I mean, i- if there's a truck there or is a parklet there or is a parked cars or, or, you know, a banana stand or whatever is there, there, that fire truck is in the travel lane. You know? It's, it's not in the parking zone. So that, that.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, I think at this point that we'll stick with where we are and, um, and I've heard the comments and suggestions from the public and certainly worth, um, exploring.
It's good to be having this discussion. It's nice, even though we don't have to act on any of this tonight because we're only acting on those very narrow resolutions. It's nice to talk about it because then we can all turn it over in our minds. And when we finally do get to talking about possibly making something permanent or whatever, we, you know, this is, this is one of those things where, um, the more time we've had to be creative and think about it and come up with ideas and consider the different options and like I'll throw out just one more little thing right now as far as that, which is that as I hear tonight from a couple of people about moving the bike rack across to the parcade. Well, yeah, logically it makes sense because the parcade is where cars park. So put the bike rack over there, but I wonder whether people who come into town with their fancy bikes and want to park them, or even somebody with a not very fancy bike like myself, who may want to sit in one of the downtown businesses, but may be able to keep their eye on their bike. Maybe they wouldn't like it so much if they can't keep their eye on their bike because it's way over across the street where they can't see it. So they're just these sort of, you just have to kind of process these things and there are a lot of things to process. So I, I think it's a good thing for us to be talking about these, even though we're not acting on them tonight.
And, and I would, I would say that what we do need to act on though, is the visibility in the crosswalk. Figuring out how to get those delivery trucks out of, um, off of Bolinas or certainly double, keeping them from being double parked on Bolinas. Um, and so getting that table out of the way and, uh, getting those pictures that seem to be a truck utility.
That, that one of the issues with, uh, with where the delivery trucks park is really just the physical effort of hauling those heavy stuff.
Yeah, no.
Also, it's also the fact that delivery truck people often leave their truck unlocked while they're running things in and out. And that is, they can do that because it's parked.
I think it's a little bit of laziness. I think they do that where I live too. They're just wherever they want to be. And they're not just on Bolinas, they're on Broadway too, double parked. So I'd like to make a motion. We wrap this baby up.
And.
I would like to make, there's one typo on this document that's very minor, but when it says passed and adopted, instead of saying the fourth day of November, 2020, it says 4HT. So I would say this, my, um, my motion would be adopt a resolution to extend the terms of temporary encroachment permits, i.e. right-of-way agreements to May 31st, 2021, with the correction of that one typo.
Is there a second? Okay, so motion Kohler and a second Reed, Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Ackerman. And myself, I vote aye. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. We are complete. And I would like to adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting and we will re-adjourn on November 18th in a special meeting. And everyone be well. We wish for good things.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, take care of it. Good night.
Night.